Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Criminal Justice. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@NYC.Council.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Thank you for cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
I am Councilmember Carolina Rivera, Chair of the Council's Committee on Criminal Justice. I'd like to welcome everyone who is here today and those joining us remotely to discuss this important topic and consider two critical and common sense bills that will move us closer to a more humane jail system. I want to recognize my colleagues who are here, Councilmembers Brewer and Carr. Today, the Committee is conducting oversight on the Department of Corrections' compliance with the Nunez Consent Judgment and, more specifically, the court-ordered action plan put in place almost six months ago to address rampant violence and departmental mismanagement at Rikers Island. These court mandates are meant to remedy unconstitutional conditions of confinement. Reaching the action plan metrics would not be a cause for celebration by any means, but only cautious and measured relief that things are moving in the right direction. Unfortunately, based on the most recent Monitor's Report, what I've seen with my own eyes, what we read in the news, and what we hear from those directly impacted, there is no reason to feel satisfied with where things stand today. The mortality rate for those in DOC custody is the highest it's been in over a decade. The rate at which uniform staff uses force against those in custody is more than double what it was in 2016, when the Nunez case was settled, and when force is used, it results in more severe injuries than the levels that existed in 2016. New York City continues to be home to the only jail system in the country, with more correction officers than people in custody, yet staff continues to work double and sometimes even triple shifts in dangerous conditions. The proportion of DOC staff unavailable to work remains double what it was before the pandemic, with staff shortages leaving incarcerated people without access to essential services in an environment where medical emergencies can go unnoticed and unaddressed, leading to tragic consequences. Despite catastrophically high rates as of September 2022, there were only 37 staff members suspended for use of force violations compared to 82 in 2021 and 78 in 2022. These statistics cannot fully illuminate the lived experience of nearly 6,000 New Yorkers in custody who continue to exist in unfathomably violent and degrading conditions. While the most recent Monitor's Report suggests that there have been some progress made, including improvements to the staff's disciplinary process, the pace of change must increase dramatically to aid all who continue to languish at RNDC, EMTC, GRVC, and/or elsewhere in DOC facilities. To that end, in addition to conducting oversight on jail conditions, we are considering two bills I've sponsored with several of my colleagues that can help bring about much-needed change. Intro 589 will mandate new reporting requirements on medical care and outcomes for incarcerated pregnant persons to make sure this population with unique health needs, including women who have higher rates of substance use disorder, trauma, mental illness, and sexually transmitted infections, are getting the proper care while in custody. In order to methodically and safely reduce the jail population, Intro 806 will require the establishment of new borough-based population teams to identify people in custody whose cases could be resolved or who could be safely released into the community. Several jurisdictions outside of New York City have adopted this approach, and it has been proven to be effective. To close Rikers Island on schedule in 2027, we must be diligent in meeting the commitments set forth in the points of agreement, chief among them, to reduce the jail population to below 4,000 individuals. With smart policies like the establishment of new population review teams, this goal is entirely within our grasp. I'm proud to be the lead sponsor of both of these bills and be joined by many members of this committee as cosponsors. With that, I look forward to hearing from representatives of the Department of Corrections and Correctional Health Services, as well as members of the public. I want to recognize we've been joined by Councilmember Schulman, as well as our public advocate, Jamani Williams. Our public advocate would like to make a short statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jamani Williams and the public advocate of the City of New York. Thanks again to the chair and the members of the committee for holding this important hearing and for allowing me to speak. In 2011, a group of people incarcerated at Rikers by the New York City Department of Corrections filed a lawsuit, Nunez versus City of New York, or known as NUNUS, in the District Court for the Southern District of New York. They alleged that corrections officers often took incarcerated people into areas of the jail that were out of view of video cameras and beat them, resulting in injuries, including broken bones, concussions, and other emergency conditions requiring hospitalization and surgery. To cover up the misconduct, the officers falsified records or fabricated disciplinary charges. Four years later, this lawsuit resulted in the court-appointed federal monitor for Rikers Island with the goal of creating a safer environment for both incarcerated people and the staff who were there. But that clearly did not fix the dangerous and deadly environment we know Rikers to be today. The jail is plagued by crumbling infrastructure, lack of staff, fights and assaults, slashings and stabbings, missed medical and court appointments, doors that do not lock, frequent overdoses, and, as of yesterday, 19 deaths so far this year, another heartbreaking, as I mentioned just days ago. Sadly, the current state of Rikers is not surprising. We do know that corrections officers work in dangerous jobs because of the environment that's there, and no one is safe on that island, and they suffer from injuries because of that and do need time to recover. We also know and it's clear that there are officers who are misusing sick leave. Chronic staffing shortages caused by officers abusing unlimited sick leave creates a dangerous environment, a more dangerous environment, where those incarcerated cannot access services and programmings, and officers must rely on last resort measures such as emergency lock and solitary confinement to manage the jail population. Further, in October, the Legal Aid Society alleged that DOC has been tampering with intake information that is used to monitor compliance with the Nunez ruling. We do not know if this was an isolated incident or an indication of chronic falsifying of records to skirt the requirements set by the federal monitor. Since 2015, New York City taxpayers have spent more than $18 million on the federal monitor, Steve J. Martin and his team, who have failed to reform any significant part of life in Rikers. This price tag does not include a specially created unit within DOC that provides information to the monitor and ensures compliance with its mandates. Martin has, in fact, argued in the most recent report that the problems "at Rikers" are so deeply entrenched and complicated that no single person, power, or authority will be able to fix them on the rapid schedule that the gravity of the problem demands. This begs the question, where do we go from here? It is clear that Rikers and DOC needs dramatic change in its culture. Corrections officers who are abusing sick leave must come back to work, and we need a concrete plan from the commission and DOC leadership to hold officers accountable that abused leave, falsified records, and used excessive force. We must end harmful practices that make jails less safe, including and especially solitary confinement. And the city as a whole must commit to further decarceration, moving from historically punitive approaches to justice and restorative justice practices and alternatives to incarceration. We have to also get our court system to move more quickly to adjudicate cases. We have spent enough time waiting for the federal monitor to improve the conditions at Rikers Island. We have to explore other measures. And while I haven't decided on my opinion yet, I do think we have to consider whether federal receivership of the jail is necessary to end the cycle of violence and death. Last month, the court ruled that we should give Commissioner Molina more time to implement his plan for the jail. The court will review the progress made in April, and I hope to work closely with the administration and the City Council to ensure that there is a positive progress made in that time. DOC and the city must also commit to the 2027 timeline that the prior administration agreed to to close the jail on Rikers Island. The threat of receivership should push us to take this as a final critical moment for change. It should not be viewed as keeping the status quo, as we know that does not work, and it should not mean the city should stop collaboratively to figure out what is needed to make our jails humane and respectful of the dignity of those who are detained and those who work in them. We have the distinction of having less people than we did over a decade ago, some most detained to correction officer, and still the most violent in the nation. Hopefully, we can do something about it really soon. Thank you.
Thank you, public advocate. We've been joined by Councilmembers Abreu and Stephens remotely. And with that, I will turn it over to Committee Counsel.
I'd now like to swear in our witnesses. From the Department of Corrections, we have with us Commissioner Louis Molina and General Counsel Paul Scheckman. And from Correctional Health Services, we have with us Jeanette Morel, the Director of Communications and Intergovernmental Affairs. If all the witnesses can raise their right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and respond honestly to council members' questions? Thank you. You may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Rivera and members of the Committee on Criminal Justice. I am Louis Molina, Commissioner of the Department of Corrections. I am joined today by my department's General Counsel, Paul Scheckman. Thank you for the opportunity to share progress that the department has made under the action plan, which was developed with the federal monitor. As you undoubtedly know, on June 14, 2022, the federal court in Nunez litigation ordered the city to adopt and comply with an action plan that has been negotiated with the federal monitor and the parties in that litigation. The action plan is just what its name suggests, a catalog of significant remedial actions that the city, and in particular, the Department of Corrections, should take to ensure that individuals in the department's custody, as well as their staff, have a safe and humane environment. Most recently, on November 17, the city and the department appeared before the federal court, Judge Laura Swain, for a status conference with respect to the progress on the action plan. At the conference, the plaintiff's counsel, but not the U.S. Attorney's Office, asked Judge Swain for permission to file a motion for the court to impose a federal receivership. The judge denied the request. In doing so, Judge Swain recognized that while much work remains to be done to improve conditions on Rikers Island, the department has demonstrated that progress has been made and has shown its commitment to reform. We next returned to court on April 27. At that time, I have every intention of presenting a picture of continued progress toward undoing the years of mismanagement and neglect that have made an action plan necessary. Let me now tell you some of the things that have been accomplished. Earlier this year, we implemented a violence reduction plan at the Robert N. Daverin Center, also known as RNDC, where we house individuals under the age of 22. We blended gangs and housing units, expanded searches for weapons and other contraband, and added staff and increased and enhanced programming. The results have been dramatic. Slashings and stabbings at that facility have decreased 85% comparing November 2021 to November 2022. This past month, there were only three such incidences at that facility. And at RNDC fiscal year-to-date, slashings and stabbings have decreased 61%, and calendar year-to-date since January of this year have decreased 23%. We are expanding our violence reduction plan to other facilities, starting with George R. Verneau Center, also known as GRVC, which houses our most violent-prone individuals. It is still a work in progress, but one that we are committed to. GRVC has experienced decreases in slashings and stabbings. From October 22 to November 22, a 42% decrease has been experienced. Month-to-date decreases in December compared to month-to-date of December of last year, slashings and stabbings have down 50%. And department-wide month-to-date in December compared to December last year, department-wide slashings and stabbings are down 31%. In consultation with the monitoring team, we are working to design and implement a restrictive housing plan to manage incarcerated individuals who have engaged in serious acts of violence and pose a heightened security risk to the safety of other persons in custody and to staff. As I have testified before, the response cannot be solitary confinement. That is illegal and inhumane. However, there must be some consequences when an individual seriously harms another individual or a staff member. You have likely read recent newspaper accounts of an incident in which an officer was stabbed at least 15 times in the back of his head, and another incident in which an officer was punched during a search operation for contraband, resulting in lacerations to his head and loss of teeth. Perpetrators of such violence, whether on staff or other incarcerated individuals, cannot be allowed to remain in general population in the aftermath of such incidents. Between January and November, we've conducted 79 tactical search operations and increased facility-led search operations and have recovered over 5,000 contraband weapons. Out of that 5,000, 1,500 weapons were recovered through tactical search operations. Tactical search operations are a basic and sound correctional practice, which the department had all but abandoned before I became Commissioner. Only by conducting regular and thorough searches can we keep our jails safe. In addition, more than 700 new state-of-the-art cell doors have been installed, and another 100 are in various stages of construction. Once closed and locked, the doors cannot be easily manipulated. The fact that we had cell doors that could easily be manipulated is a clear evidence of the neglect that long existed on Rikers Island. In recent months, the department has appointed more than 30 new leaders, many from outside the City of New York, bringing diverse perspectives from all over the country. That includes a senior deputy commissioner, 10 deputy commissioners, and six associate commissioners. Many of these men and women have broad experience in corrections and law enforcement. They bring a new vision and fresh ideas to the department. Let me highlight just one of those new leaders. In October, Joseph Dempsey joined us as senior deputy commissioner of operations. Senior Deputy Commissioner Dempsey comes to us with more than three decades of experience with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, where he oversaw three jail facilities and 2,500 employees. He exemplifies the type of people we are bringing on to support our new initiatives. We have recently received authorization from Judge Swain to consider for hire candidates from outside the department's rank and file to manage our facilities. The monitor recommended this approach, and we are now moving forward on it. I want to make clear that considering outside candidates does not lessen my appreciation for our current wardens and acting wardens, or diminishes my respect for the hard work that they have done. But this authorization allows me more flexibility in hiring and can only make us better. We have taken measures to return officers from sick leave to facility posts and to promote staff accountability. When I came into office just 11 months ago, the average daily sick percentage was 26.1%. Through our relentless efforts to bring our workforce back to facilities, we had been able to reduce that number down to only 11.8%. And we aren't stopping there. The average daily medically monitored restricted level-three percentage, those staff who are unable to interact with incarcerated individuals, has declined more than 20%. This is a clear indication that the measures we have adopted are having the desired effect. We have also imposed discipline where it has been warranted. Almost 500 staff have been suspended this year, which as far surpasses the number for the prior two calendar years. And over 180 staff have been terminated, which are significantly reducing the backlog of our disciplinary cases. As I have signed off and closed out calendar year-to-date, over 2,200 disciplinary cases in 11 months, which is likely more than any commissioner of any city agency in New York City history. This is just some of what has been accomplished. Let me be clear, we have much more to do, and we will do it. A federal receiver is not the answer. The answer is strong city leadership and unwavering commitment to reform. I am immensely proud of the men and women who come to work every day to the Department of Corrections and what is undoubtedly the most demanding job in city service. We are the boldest. We want safe and humane facilities for our city and have taken substantial steps towards getting there. I'm pleased to answer your questions.
Thank you for your testimony. You mentioned some examples of the corrections officers, who I think I've been on record multiple times saying Rikers Island is a dangerous place for the incarcerated and officers alike. There's no question. In your testimony, I know that one of the focuses is staffing, and that was important in terms of the action plan. I want to touch a little bit on the actual incarcerated persons there. So Commissioner Molina, as you know, on Sunday evening, we learned that Eduardo Mejias died at AMKC. At the time of his death, Mr. Mejias was 39 years of age. He became the 19th individual to die in DOC custody this year. According to news reports, it was fellow incarcerated people who alerted DOC staff that Mr. Mejias was experiencing a suspected overdose. Staff then administered Narcan, but unfortunately, Mr. Mejias could not be revived. At this point, do you know if the housing area where Mr. Mejias experienced this medical emergency was fully staffed, where the officers assigned to the post working a double or triple shift at the time of the incident? Were there any missed tours before or during the emergency?
So first of all, I'd like to provide my condolences to Mr. Mejias's family. I cannot fully understand, you know, what they're going through right now, as I've experienced in family incarceration as well, and word from my family members that we're justice-involved. Specifically to Mr. Mejias, the situation is under investigation by the Attorney General, but I can tell you that he was in a dorm housing. The housing unit was staffed. Both the B post officer and the A post officer were both working and were attentive to all of the gentlemen that were in that housing unit. They came to his medical aide within seconds of being alerted that he was in some level of medical distress and took action to bring Mr. Mejias to the main clinic to receive medical services. And unfortunately, Mr. Mejias passed away.
So you're saying the housing area was fully staffed?
It was fully staffed.
When there is a death in custody, it's my understanding that a call-out report is completed by the Investigations Division within 24 to 48 hours, which covers details on the incident that occurred and makes determinations as to whether suspensions are warranted for staff. Have you suspended any CO or captain as a result of Mr. Mejias's death? If not, why not?
I have not suspended anyone specific to that incident. Prelimarily, investigations done by the investigation staff showed that our staff responded within seconds to Mr. Mejias's distress, did everything they could to render aid and bring him to the main clinic so that he can receive aid from Correctional Health Services, so there was no reason to suspend staff specific to that incident of Mr. Mejias's passing.
So no one is at fault, according to your determination?
Well, the investigation is still ongoing, but there was no indication that there was any failure on our staff to not respond as quickly as we could, which was within seconds of Mr. Mejias's indication of medical distress.
According to reports, on November 18, Mr. Mejias's attorney reached out to the Department of Corrections on behalf of his client because he wasn't getting medical care for his asthma. In an email, his attorney sent to DOC on November 17, medical treatment was requested because his client was having trouble breathing and was in a lot of distress. In response, the DOC attorney responded, "Please be advised that the New York City Department of Corrections does not administer medical care," and referred him to Correctional Health Services. Can you confirm if DOC was informed about Mr. Mejias's health conditions in the middle of November, and was anything done after receiving this email from his attorney?
I would have to defer to Correctional Health Services regarding specifically to his medical care. I know that we often refer individuals that feel that they need some level of medical care. We refer those to Correctional Health Services, so I can't imagine, in this instance, we would defer from that.
And I'm limited by what I can share about a patient's particular medical conditions, but I can tell you that we will review clinically this case.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last part?
Oh, we will review clinically the case.
Do you believe response provided by your agency's attorney in response to being informed of Mr. Mejias's medical records were sufficient?
Are you asking me that question?
Yeah.
I believe the response was appropriate, and then we have a process to refer patients that feel that they need medical services to Correctional Health Services so that they can provide those services to them. We don't know details of a patient's medical history, and we would not even provide that via an email to any attorney because it's also protected by HIPAA.
I ask because that response, many would find unacceptable. It was brief. It was impersonal. I understand that there is a course of action you have to take. There are processes. Are you planning on taking any action to discipline the attorney? Will you reevaluate how you respond in the future?
We have almost 6,000 individuals in our custody at any one time, which translates into almost 6,000 patients for Correctional Health Services. We were communicating in a business environment with an attorney that was representing his client, and I think the response answered the attorney's question. So I don't see myself taking any disciplinary action on the attorney.
There have been well-documented issues with incarcerated people languishing in horrific conditions in intake, leading to a requirement in the September 2021 Second Remedial Order on Nunez that people must be processed out of intake within 24 hours. In mid-June, the Board of Corrections uncovered 16 instances of DOC staff tampering with lengths of stay in the new admission intake, seemingly to avoid the appearance that the person was there longer... Seemingly to avoid the appearance that the person was there longer than 24 hours. So Commissioner Molina, at the July BOC meeting, you said that the issue has been referred to the internal DOC Investigation Division. And then again, last month, in response to another question, you said the matter was still under investigation. So it's been six months since these allegations of tampering came to light. Intake delays are clearly a serious issue. It's about getting people out of crowded and often chaotic conditions and into an area where they have at least a bed, a shower, regular food, medical distribution. Has the department finished its internal investigation into the alleged tampering? If it has been referred to an outside agency, which agency? When was it referred? And what, if anything, have you received back?
Yeah, so I think I was clear in the last BOC meeting that that matter was referred to DOI. So DOI is investigating that matter. But I'd like to take the time now to just sort of fully-throated ask, respond to some of what you said regarding the intake at EMTC. So EMTC did recently receive 60 new correctional officers from our recent graduating class. What that has allowed us to do now is to allow staff in the intake that's going to be steady staff, and their seasoned correctional officers that will be working in the intake process. We've also are redesigning the flow of the process for individuals that are coming into custody. We're assigning a tour commander so that they have oversight responsibility over the intake, and our tour commanders are assistant deputy wardens, so they are above of corrections captains. We've developed clear duty expectations and training to go along with them for all staff that work in the intake process. And we've also working with our Office of Management Analysis and Planning, our IT Department. We've also enhanced our dashboard so we can conduct not only regular audits, but sort of capture nuances of when we may have an outlier of someone in a particular stage in the process and why there is a delay of that person going through the process. We're also assigning additional vehicles to be able to transport persons in custody so that the facility where central intake is occurring, which is EMTC, isn't solely reliant on the Transportation Division to transport individuals.
So let me ask you about the Transportation Division. A question related to that. So one of the main factors for why the jail population remains high is systemic failures with case processing that cause people to remain in custody for unacceptable lengths of time, awaiting a disposition in their case. This problem obviously involves the courts, it involves prosecutors and defense counsel, but DOC transportation staff is also an important component. So the mayor's management report states that in fiscal year '22, DOC failed to produce people in custody to their trials on time at least 20% of that time. That's far worse than in fiscal year 2019, when that happened about 3% of the time, even though there were far fewer trials happening in fiscal year '22 than fiscal year '19. What are you doing to make sure members of your staff are getting people to court? And have court production rates improved in the past five months since the start of fiscal year '23? And since the start of fiscal year '23, what were the production rates for people who had video court appearances?
Thank you for your question. So I can talk globally. I think every part of the adjudication process is important. So we have, in the... So we have individuals who we produce for court for a number of things. One is for trial. We produce individuals for court hearings that are a step in the process to have that person possibly go to trial or negotiate their pre-agreement if that's what they so choose to do. And in some cases, individuals may be exonerated. Globally, all of those productions have increased substantially since January. When I got here in January, court production in general was about at 60%. Citywide, that production for bringing people to court has been between about 88 and 90% citywide for all of the boroughs. And that's for everybody that we're bringing produced to go to court via the Transportation Division. Now specifically to the percentage that you quoted, that was for court production on time for trial specifically, which I believe in the last PMMR for fiscal year 22 was at about 75%. So clearly, we are doing a number of things so that we can try and do better. We do have individual defendants that refuse to go to court, and one of the things that I've instructed my staff is not to get engaged into physical uses of force to bring individuals to court. So we do record those refusals, provide them to the respective courts so that we can work with the courts to get securing orders and get authorization from the courts. If the courts want the individual present, well, we may have to use force to bring that person into court to increase the percentages of people being produced to go to court. There are also a number of reasons why, outside of refusals, that someone may not go to court. Someone may be ill and be too ill to go to court. We had the pandemic, so there on occasion may have an individual that's COVID positive, and we don't bring that individual to court because of their COVID positive condition. On occasion, we have individuals that may be celebrating a religious holiday, and even though the courts are open, they want to recognize their religious affiliation, so they don't go to court either. So we've done a number of things to sort of improve and make sure our court production is working effectively. The IT Department, working with our Transportation Division and our Classification Unit, also did work with the Office of Court Administration, and we come up with a dashboard so that we can track individuals that are needed for court at varying levels of stages of wherever they may be in the court process. I myself, even too, from time to time, are communicating with felony Supreme Court judges on multi-defendant cases where they want to ensure that these multi-defendants in these cases, because in some cases it involves multiple juries, that these individuals are produced to go to court, and we've been successful in doing that. I think understanding the gravity of the situation, coming out of the pandemic, as you've stated, courts were not functioning normally. So I know, looking back at 2019 to present, the performance is not at the same level, but 2019 and 2000, where we are at today, is a very, very different place in the world. So it comes with its challenges, but we're always striving to do better.
Do you have the data on how many individuals have actually refused to go to court?
I can look into getting that for you because we are setting up meetings with OCA and the Chief Administrative Law Judge when that person is appointed to discuss those issues.
Okay, I look forward to those numbers. I have a number of colleagues that want to ask questions, so I'm just going to ask you just a couple more before we get to them. So the current mortality rate for those in DOC custody is the highest it's been in over a decade. And in the most recent report, the Monitor made a series of recommendations as to next steps on this issue and noted that in custody deaths are related to, related at least in part, to the convergence of poor operational and clinical practices, inadequate supervision, and management failures that have characterized the day-to-day operation of the jails for decades. The Monitor recommended that the city complete an assessment by the end of November as to what barriers exist to information sharing between DOC and CHS. Has that occurred? And what barriers were identified? What are you doing to address them?
Thank you for your question. So we have strengthened our communication with Correctional Health Services. They've been really a strategic partner in trying to make sure that we increase access to healthcare services for the incarcerated population. Not only are we meeting with CHS staff at the facility level and making sure that we're having these clinical huddles so that the leadership at the facility levels can get a clear understanding of the individual, what the circumstances of the patients that are in their respective facilities. My senior deputy commissioner Dempsey is meeting with the senior leadership of CHS and having regular communication with them, which has yielded more efficiencies, we think, into making sure that we have synergy and alignment in our operations to provide services to the people in our custodial care. I don't know if CHS has anything to add.
I would just add that we've also committed to more frequent and timely joint assessment and review, which are called JARS, to collaborate and review negative patient outcomes.
Well, the Monitor recommended better morbidity, mortality reviews closer in time to the deaths because it said that the actual JARS process was insufficient. So have you changed things since you've started that process?
So I think the issue with the JARS was that they weren't happening timely enough or close enough to the adverse event. So there's a renewed commitment between both agencies to do that moving forward.
The Monitor also recommended that facility leadership review incidents of self-harm every week. Is that happening?
Yes.
Having any impact?
So the senior deputy commissioner and the deputy commissioners that oversee all of our uniform operations, to include our two associate commissioners, meet regularly, weekly with the facility leadership to go over a number of things, and self-harm is one of those topics.
The Monitor recommended that the Investigation Division have a dedicated group of investigators to review self-harm incidents and identify gaps in practice. Has that occurred? And how many incidents have they reviewed and to what end?
So that piece of it has not occurred. We're trying to think through how we can possibly operationalize that and if whether ID is the appropriate business unit to be able to do that work. They do have very, very skilled investigators, but it's a different type of investigators that should be reviewing those types of things. So I want to just really confer, rely on our partners in Correctional Health Services to think about what is the type of investigator that maybe should be hired for that, so that may require additional resources.
Okay. There are 1,100 people in Rikers with a serious mental illness, yet the Nunez Action Plan does not include any actions specifically related to people with mental illness, even though mental health issues are directly related to many uses of force. Specialized Mental Health Related Crisis Intervention Training, CIT, has been proven to be effective at de-escalation, reducing violence, and uses of force. So how many current staff have completed the CIT training? Have any staffs received CIT training during your tenure? And what steps are you taking to ensure staff with crisis intervention training are assigned to mental health units, namely CAPS, PACE, and mental observation units?
Thank you for your question. I'm a big supporter of crisis intervention teams. The training provides participants with the needed knowledge and skills really to attempt to effectively mitigate escalating situations in specialized mental health housing areas without the use of tactical interventions, as you mentioned. So the training teaches a really team-based approach. The training that we have is integrated with medical and mental health staff. It's a 40-hour training that's offered over the course of five days. It's not currently mandatory and not offered to new recruits, but we've recently appointed a new deputy commissioner of training who's very familiar with crisis intervention training, and I've asked him to incorporate moving forward crisis intervention training into the academies moving forward so that we train our staff from the ground floor within our academies with a crisis intervention training focus. We do have, it is required for all of our members of service, correctional officers that are assigned to CAPS and PACE units. As you mentioned earlier in the year, we were dealing with a drastic staffing shortage. So some of the officers who currently work in staff CAPS and PACE units may not have received CIT training as they are not steady to those units, but we're working on identifying that, and we are getting to a place where we could have steady officers assigned to these very critical functions like PACE and CAPS, as well as like intake, what I mentioned earlier. We currently do have 575 active correctional officers that have received the five-day crisis intervention training, and we're gearing that training back up, not only in the academy, but in our in-service training as well.
You mentioned in the last hearing that there was going to be training on how to administer Narcan to all of your officers. How is that progressing?
Yeah, so we have already trained, I believe it's slightly over 2,000 correctional officers on the use of Narcan. The training is ongoing and continues. We should have the entirety of the department done by the early part of this coming, next year's summer, in June of 23. In addition to that, we have expanded the placement of Narcan. Usually, they were only in the A post housing units. The senior deputy commissioner has worked with Correctional Health Services to get Narcan also placed in support areas as well as in the courts. In addition to that, we have, we are working on procuring a large amount of Narcan, working with the unions. They have agreed for their officers to carry Narcan on their person. So we're working on procuring a large-scale Narcan, as well as Narcan holders, so that staff that are trained can be issued Narcan directly and use it instantly if they see someone under distress.
All right. I have a question about tablets, but I'll wait until after my colleagues. I just want to pull something that was actually in, that the Monitor recently noted in describing the State of Affairs at Rikers Island. Staff's often confrontational demeanor contributes to incidents spiraling out of control, and that the constant disruption of even the most basic services, recreation, laundry, commissary, barbershop, creates additional frustration among people in custody, which can lead to avoidable conflict and violence. Is providing basic services part of your violence reduction plan? If so, how? And can you tell me a little bit about the weekend visiting hours? And when do you anticipate beginning to provide daily recreation again?
So to answer your question regarding basic services, so basic services and quite frankly, enhanced services, because we do have a very rich suite of program offerings that we do provide to people that are incarcerated. And I would tell you that not only basic services, but enhanced programming services were very critical and key to getting the violence significantly reduced at RNDC, our young adult facility. And I mentioned the significant decreases that we saw at RNDC as one component to bringing violence down in the facility. As we replicate that violence plan for GRVC, which is another facility that we're having challenges with, one is, I think it's important to recognize that in RNDC, we have young adults, they respond to different level of stimuli, and other strategies differently than full-grown adults do. But what we did at RNDC was reopen the Peace Center, which had been closed. When I got there, I worked with our deputy commissioner of programs and community engagement. We got the Peace Center open. I believe you and many members on this committee have been to the Peace Center, which stands for Programs, Education, and Community Engagement. And there's a number of amenities, both that provide physical stimulation with exercise as well as educational engagement, horticulture, a number of things that happen in the Peace Center that helps incentivize housing units to behave well and coexist with each other in some level of harmony, and they have used to those amenities at the Peace Center. What we did at GRVC was complete construction recently of closing down a housing unit to recreate the Peace Center in GRVC, with similar and alike amenities that we have at RNDC are now being afforded at GRVC, and the Peace Center at GRVC is called the Beacon. We've recently had Thanksgiving meal in that Peace Center. We had a ribbon-cutting ceremony that involved the people, persons that are incarcerated were involved in that ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Peace Center. So we think that that's one, in addition to basic services, but also enhanced services that we hope are going to be part of a multi-pronged strategy to deal with violence at GRVC. And preliminarily, as I stated in my statement, we have seen from October to November, when that Peace Center was open, a 41%, 42% decrease in slashes and stabbings going from October to November. And month-to-date, we've seen a decreasing in slashes and stabbings at GRVC of 50%. So it's still early, but we're very hopeful that the similar and alike, not only basic services, but enhanced programming services that we are providing for persons in custody to the inclusion of tablets, which were already deployed for the entirety of GRVC, are one step in a multi-pronged strategy to reduce idle time and reduce violence.
Who have you contracted for the tablets?
We've used a current vendor who works with our telephone system, Securus, and that is the vendor of our new tablet strategy.
And you've, just to confirm, you've restarted weekend visiting hours?
I do not believe that we've restarted weekend visiting hours. No, we have not restarted weekend visiting hours.
Have you began to provide daily recreation again?
So we do provide outside recreation as well as inside recreation. So recreation is provided as a minimum standard to the person in custody.
Is every person in general population housing in Department of Correction custody getting an hour of recreation every day?
I'm pretty confident that they are, yes.
You're confident?
Yes.
Because you're under oath. Okay. Thank you very much. I want to go to my colleagues. I want to recognize we've been joined by Councilmember Wrestler. And for questions, I have, we'll start with Councilmember Brewer, then Hanif, and then Narcisse.
Thank you very much. I actually want to follow up on the healthcare because, you know, it seems to me, having not the expertise of my colleague, the chair, but having been to Rikers over the years many, many times and more recently. If you're in custody and you are perhaps not getting great healthcare on the outside, which many of us do not, to be honest with you, it seems to me that health and hospitals, i.e. Correctional Health, and we're glad you're there, we're glad it's not a private institution, we're glad it's H&amp;H. But what exactly do you do to support the healthcare of these individuals? In other words, it couldn't be, instead of being reactive, can you be proactive? An example for me is, I understand, is other facilities, health professionals, be they psychiatrists, doctors, nurses, whatever, go to the facility on a regular basis, talking to people, because I hate going to the doctor. Hate it! And I can imagine the lack of healthcare in the past makes one very suspicious. What are you doing to be proactive so that the, I don't know, not everybody who has died has had an incident of feeling ill before, but many did, from my understanding. So how can we change, or do you think we should change, the model for healthcare at Rikers?
Sure. So to start, there is a comprehensive medical intake that happens as soon as someone enters the city's custody. So that is, you know, starts with vitals and testing for things like communicable diseases because, as you noted, people in our care do have a higher disease burden of things like hepatitis and HIV.
Okay.
They also are screened by our nursing staff, medical, and then that can also result in a mental health referral where they would get a comprehensive mental health evaluation. In terms of access to care, we do have a clinic in every facility
Yes.
where most of our general population patients would receive services, be it mental health or medical. We also have a therapeutic housing model, both medical and mental health. So for patients who have serious mental illness, they may be housed on a mental observation unit or a PACE unit that the commissioner referenced. So that's where our staff are actually embedded right in the units, providing that kind of direct access you were referring to.
I do know some of that. My question a little bit different, which is, it seems to me that you have a set of people you meet with when you come in. It's not necessarily a pleasant experience to get all of that done, and then you're there. But the question is, do you not think there should be more interaction as opposed to, I have to go to the clinic because I have a mental condition, I have an outburst, I have an ailment? Something's not working right now. It's not working, from what I understand. So I'm just, don't you think there should be, or could we change the way in which healthcare is distributed? In other words, what really meaning is get out of the clinic, go into the general population or go elsewhere to talk to people so that they're comfortable talking to health professionals? From my understanding, people don't want to go to the clinic, and that's part of the issues that the commissioner is dealing with. I don't want to go to court, and I don't want to go to the health clinic. So how do you change that? You're not in charge of the court, but you are in charge of the healthcare. So how do you change that?
So we do have staff that, you know, work on the units, not in necessarily clinical capacity, you're referring mostly to general population.
Anybody. You've got 5,000 people to work with, 6,000. Go ahead.
So we do schedule appointments for patients to come to the clinic. I think that there's also, you know, a health triage line, which is a line that patients can call using the phone in their housing area if they want to reach out directly and speak to a CHS nurse. So I think, you know, we also have educational flyers.
But do psychiatrists, for instance, or mental health professionals go into the population to have ongoing peer review, peer discussion, something different?
So one of the challenges-
I'm just, it's not working now. It really isn't.
So I think one of the challenges with sort of the cell-side care you're describing, the general population floor really isn't an appropriate setting for our psychiatrist to be trying to provide either an evaluation or direct therapy to- to be trying to provide either an evaluation or direct therapy to a patient. So bringing patients to the clinic really is that right setting for our patients. And there's always opportunities for better collaboration and communication with the department to ensure access, but really, you know, going onto the GP housing floor.
As health professional, do you make any recommendation about food?
For certain patients, we may work with the department's dietitian, but generally, food procurement is handled by the department.
Is that something that you might make, in that there is a connection between food and health? Is that something you might make a recommendation about?
Sure. For certain, yeah, patients with certain medical needs, for example.
Forget the medical needs. I'm just saying, in general, the food. You might make a recommendation about healthier food. Is that something that you might consider?
Of course, sure.
Okay. I'm going to leave it at that. I'm just saying, I really do believe, and Dr. Katz almost how I feel, this is not the way to go. You need to be much more proactive and you need to have health professionals that feel, that the persons who are incarcerated feel comfortable with. And because that's the only way you're going to have people talk about what they are concerned about. It's, I have to say, it's not working right now. There are things that are working. Healthcare at Rikers is not working. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Brewer. And we fully understand you can't have a psychiatrist see a patient in the middle of general population. We're talking about specifically listening to individuals and trying to develop some sort of comprehensive plan for all of the issues that they have. So I just want to clear that up.
Yeah, appreciate it.
We're going to go to council member Carr and then Hanif and then Narcisse. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Rivera. Good afternoon. Thank you all for being here. You know, we talked a little bit about the progress that's been made in terms of sick outs from staff and calling out sick. Could you tell us year to date, how much staff the corrections department has, has lost, whether it's to retirements or resignations?
Yeah, so our attrition this year has been almost about 1,000 officers that have either retired or resigned or been offered other employment elsewhere and have left the department. So we're embarking on a very aggressive recruitment strategy. We've just recruited and graduated a class of 108 officers. But attrition in the workforce is not exclusively a DOC issue, though it hits us more because we're managing a very vulnerable volatile population. But we're not immune to the issues of the change of the framework of work in America today.
And when the 180 are onboarded, how many budgeted vacancies will you have at Department of Corrections?
So we, we just graduated a class of 108. I'm sorry if I misspoke, 108. And we have a few hundred funded lines to hire individuals to back for those vacancies. And we're doing that now. We expect to have another academy in late February, where we hope to bring on a few hundred officers, presuming the candidates are willing to take the position.
Right. I ask because, you know, in the context of we're trying to focus on delivery of services, which means bringing people to services, bringing people to court, and that involves taking officers who may be on a block, out of that block, doing transport, like, do you feel like you have enough staff on a regular basis in order to have everybody get to their correctional health appointment, get to their court date, get to enhanced service programming? Do you feel like that you're struggling to do this on a day to day basis? And do you have any data on when you haven't been able to make those appearances with incarcerated individuals because you didn't have staff to take out of the block?
Well, thank you for your question. So we've had, made incredible strides with lowering the absentee rate from 26.1% at the beginning of the year to 11.8% now. So a significant number of staff have come back to work. So we're able to produce individuals for clinical health services, programming services. We were able to assign correctional officers back to the division of programs so that individuals can not only get minimum standards, but also get enhanced programming. So I would say that the correctional officers, as they had during the pandemic, have really stepped up to a very challenging situation. My concern is always of the future. As our incarcerated population increases, we would need more staff sort of manage those increases of those that are justice involved.
No, I appreciate that answer, because I'm concerned about the ability for you to meet, you know, your core mission, which includes being able to deliver folks to needed services, needed appointments, whether they're in Rikers or outside. And it sounds to me like 1,000 to have left in less than a calendar year, that seems like a significant, a significant departure of staff, whether it's for retirements or other reasons. Would you agree with that? Would you agree that that's unusually high?
I think it's, it's significant, but I think that we had a lot of significant things having over the course of the last few years that were significant in the lives of those making the decisions to move on. The department was mismanaged for a very, very long time, from 2015 to 2021. I'm sure many staff, like staff that work in other industries, reached a breaking point and they made different career choices and moving on to do something different. But that doesn't take away from the over 5,000 uniform officers, staff that we have there that continue to come to work every day to do a very, very challenging job.
Thank you. I want to talk a little bit about the, the response to the tragic loss that just recently happened. When you testified at a previous hearing, you talked about the ways in which fentanyl can be brought into your facilities. What are you doing in order to prevent that from happening? I think you talked about soaked letters in the past and other things of that nature. And then, you know, Narcan is an amazing drug, but if it's not followed up with, you know, an attempt to put people on a path to recovery, you're just waiting for the same situation to happen again. And so I'd like to talk a little bit about, you know, what addiction recovery looks like at Rikers with Correctional Health Services.
Sure, yeah, I can start. So we do screen people for substance use needs when they come into custody. And then we also operate the nation's largest jail-based opioid treatment program called KEEP. And that provides methadone treatment, buprenorphine to people in our care. They also are the team that would follow up to the housing area should an overdose or suspected overdose have occurred there. And there are multiple pathways to provide our patients with connections to that services, those services.
And I'm sorry, the answer to the other question about keeping the drugs out of the facility?
Yeah, so we have done, we have a number of interdictions that we've done. We've significantly increased interdiction of drugs coming into the mail, use of K-9 dogs, tactical search operations, like I've mentioned before, and including, including over 5,000 weapons, contraband weapons recovered. We've recovered over 1,000 contraband items. We are looking to hopefully in the near future, scan mail. Fentanyl comes in through the mail, through soaked pages and books and other articles that are sent to persons in custody, so to distribute that throughout our facilities. But I just want to, you know, point out that overdoses are not unique to the New York City DOC. We as a country are really under the deadliest drug epidemic in history. And as per the CDC, we've had overdoses is the leading cause of death for individuals aged 18 to 49. And more than 100,000 people have died from drug overdoses in 2021 in this country, two-thirds connected to fentanyl. And we are on pace to repeat that number again in 2022. So it is a thing that has crippled America and is not something that's exclusively a unique situation to the New York City Department of Correction.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for the questions. We're going to go to council members Hanif and then Narcisse and then Wrestler and then Abreu.
Thank you so much, Chair Rivera, and good afternoon, Commissioner Molina. I'm proud to be a cosponsor on Chair Rivera's Bill Intro 806, which would establish a multi-stakeholder population review team. Several jurisdictions, including Lucas County, Ohio, St. Louis County, Missouri, and Pima County, Arizona, have adopted PRTs. And an evaluation found that the PRT in St. Louis County reduced the pre-trial population by 19% and length of stay for black people by 28% and for white folks by 15%. Could you share what percentage of people held on Rikers Island are being held there pre-trial?
I can share with you that about just under 400 of the persons that are in custody are sentenced. And the balance of the individuals that are in custody, about 5,500 or so are there for pre-trial.
Fifty-five?
About 5,500, approximately, on an average daily population.
And then what's the average length of stay for a pre-trial defense detainee, sorry?
Currently, right now, just over 100 days is the average length of stay when you look at the population in its entirety. That being said, we do have over 500 individuals, pre-trial detainees, that have been in our custody for over two years. And we have over 800 individuals that have been in our custody from anywhere from one to two years.
And could you share this, disaggregated by race?
I'm sure we could. I don't have that on me right now, but we could, we could follow up with you and get that to you. I believe we should have that.
Okay, great. And then the plan to close Rikers by 2027, which is mandated by law, requires the population of people held by DOC to be brought to a maximum of 3,300. What's the current census?
The current census is just under 6,000.
And then you just mentioned in a response to council member Carr, if I was understanding you correctly, that you believe that the number of people in DOC custody will increase?
I'm highly confident that if nothing changes, it will increase.
By how much?
It depends. I mean, we have done internally population forecasts that we think the population in 2024 could be over 7,000.
And then what about for the next four years?
Well, it's less reliable to do population estimates that far out, but I don't see them being at 3,300 in less than four years if nothing else changes with the administration and adjudication of the administration of justice at the court levels.
So then would you say that the city's on track to meet its requirements to close Rikers?
I think if Rikers has to close, what we have to think about is where does the balance of that population go if we are not at 3,300 by 2027?
So that's no?
The law mandates that the island has to close, then we cannot have defendants on the island. Something would have to change if Rikers Island was going to be part of the equation on or after 2027. What I'm telling you is that in 2027, we will not be at 3,300.
Okay. And then the monitor's report noted that the Health Management Division staff sometimes usurp the protocols for sick leave monitoring and engage in dishonest practices. How have the HMD staff who engaged in this been held accountable?
So there's been significant accountability at the Health Management Division. That's why our, there's been such a significant decrease in staff that has been out. When we did an evaluation of the Health Management Division, we removed the then-head of the Health Management Division. We transferred a number of staff out of there. And in the removal of the head of the Health Management Division was really the forced retirement of that individual. And we put new leadership at the Health Management Division. So the Health Management Division has really undergone what I would describe as a significant change in the leadership structure and how it is managed. And it is directly under the supervision now, which wasn't prior to me coming here, under the first deputy commissioner's office.
Understood. And then the monitor's report noted that your sick leave monitoring policy was revised to set more sensible requirements to determine whether someone was home when they are supposed to be. What exactly is the new policy?
Well, when he speaks to sensible requirements, I think there had not been any updates to the, to the visit policy in some time, decades likely. And in the prior policy, I don't remember the exact number, but you had to let the phone ring X number amount of times, it was like over 20 times or some ridiculous amount of number. So we've lowered those sort of thresholds to a level of reasonableness that we can determine if someone is out of their residence when they should be homesick.
So are you able to share how many knocks on how many doors, how much time was spent waiting at the door?
We can get you that. We can follow with you.
And how many phone calls?
Sure.
And then lastly, the monitor's, monitor's report noted that 1,029 staff have been identified as chronic absentees, but there's a backlog in actually prosecuting them. How is this backlog being addressed?
So we have, so just to put it into context, when I came into office in January, we almost had 4,000 backlog of cases going back to probably to 2017, as it relates to a number of different categories of discipline. And as I stated in my opening statement, I have signed off and adjudicated over 2,200 cases over the last 11 months. We have done a lot more enforcement in the area of staff absenteeism and abuse of sick leave. So obviously, there's a little bit of buildup in those cases, but cases are, from a disciplinary standpoint, are being adjudicated, from my perspective, at a significantly faster rate than what had historically been done in the department.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, council member. Council member Narcisse?
Good afternoon. It's always a pleasure to see you. And I know you're working hard to change things at Rikers. And the note that I see here, I was reading, you were able to decrease the sick leave from our officers to 11% from 26%. I would say that's progress. But one of the things that I have read too, in New York City, I mean, New York, right? New York City has the only jail system in the country with more guards than people in custody. So is that correct?
Currently, based on today's census and the number of correctional officers that we have, we may not have more officers than people in custody at this point in time.
Okay. But we're making progress, like those sick leave. I see you doing some wonderful work here. But the thing I'm looking at, it's, we have some big guns that came from different cities. We have 10 deputy commissioners. Is that to address the problem that we're dealing with, with Rikers? Like to prevent those kind of like folks hanging themselves? Is those commissioners going to help with that system? Because the problem we have is the service within the system.
Yeah, so the, the system needs to be led by competent leaders. And under this administration, what we have done in the Department of Corrections, it's done something that the monitor has sought for a very, very long time, which is to infuse the system's senior leadership over uniform operations with individuals that come with a set of experiences and talents to be able to lead us out of these very, very complex problems that quite frankly have happened over the years because of mismanagement. So we brought in deputy commissioners. We no longer have three-star level chiefs managing major operations on the uniform side. We have a deputy commissioner of administration, a deputy commissioner of classification, custody management, and facility operations, that's one role, as well as a deputy commissioner of security. And we no longer have a chief of department at this time. That position is being managed by the senior deputy commissioner, Dempsey, who joined our department in October. And I think the hundreds of years of collective experience that all these individuals bring, not only in corrections, but in law enforcement, in public health, and other business skills, is what, is what is going to lead us out of this situation that has been created over the many decades in this city.
Okay, I appreciate that. What steps are you taking to ensure staff with crisis intervention training are assigned to mental health units, namely CAPS, PACE, and mental observation units?
So correctional officer staff in those units are sent to CIT training. We have over 545, I think it's 545 staff members that have been CIT trained. Not all of them are in CAPS and PACE. We're looking to introduce CIT training in the next academy class. We have a new deputy commissioner of training that just started, who has significant experience in leading law enforcement academy. And he'll be working on that to introduce us to the next academy. And it's our goal that we get to a point where all of our staff are engaged with conflict intervention training.
You know the reason I'm asking that question. Mental health is a big deal. And I have visited Rikers many occasions and I'm looking through those eyes. And just by looking at those young folks, you realize there's a lot of mental health. And PACE units for people with serious mental illness who cannot safely and fully function in the general population have been shown to reduce uses of force by 69% and assault on staff by 63%. DOC has long committed to increase the number of PACE units. However, to date, that expansion has not occurred because DOC has not had the staff available. Is that correct?
Yes, that's partially correct. But what I will tell you is that use of force has decreased calendar year to date 16%. We have 1,200 less incidences of force calendar year to date. And assaults on staff approximately are down calendar year to date, as well as fiscal year to date, 30% as well, approximately. So our staff are stepping up to the challenges of their position and working in partnership with correctional health services. We do everything we can every day to try and de-escalate these situations from getting to a point of physical confrontation.
Thank you. So you commit, can you commit to open additional PACE units within the next three months?
I can't commit to that.
Why not?
With additional PACE units. What I can commit to is that I'm open, I would not prevent them from being opening if we have the capacity and bandwidth to do so. We have a lot of challenges in the department. And just opening up PACE and CAPS units, when our staff, correctional health staff, we don't have the bandwidth to take on those additional patients, would be reckless to do. patients, would be reckless to do.
I would just note, we have been able to open a housing unit called Gate, which supports patients who have substance use needs and mental health needs who would otherwise be housed in general population. So while not PACE level of care, it is meeting this particular need among patients with those vulnerabilities.
And you know, the concern that I have not only at Rikers is the coming back and reintegrated in our community. I used to be a nurse for rehab, for reentry programs, and I have seen it firsthand. So particularly, I would like to see that happen. And Commissioner?
I got it.
Please do the best because they're coming back to our community, Black and Brown communities.
Always do.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wrestler?
Thank you. To each of the panelists, good to see Commissioner Molina, Deputy Commissioner Scheckman, Jeanette. I firstly just want to thank Chair Rivera. The Population Review Team bill, Intro 806, is one of the single best bills under consideration in the City Council. And I really want to thank you for drafting it and leading on it.
And thank you.
I could not more enthusiastically support it. If we look back just a few years ago to earlier in the pandemic, when the de Blasio administration actively implemented population review teams, it had tremendous success. We successfully drove down the population of Rikers Island under 4,000 when MACJ, DOC, and the other key stakeholders in the criminal justice system were working together to smartly and safely drive down our population. Do, does DOC support Intro 806?
So we, so in principle, I do support population management teams. Our classification consultant, Dr. Jim Austin, which some of you have met, had brought this as a recommendation. It was without, it was beyond the scope of our power as a department to do it.
Have you been working with MACJ on similar efforts?
Yes, yes, we have. So we do work with MACJ regularly to send them out long stayers so that they can confer with the respective district attorneys in order to advance those cases quicker through the courts. And I know General Counsel Scheckman has also engaged with senior leadership at the chief judges' level, identifying individuals and cases so that they can move through the courts quickly as well.
You know, this is an area where we should be able to work together, where I think Chair Rivera, and members of the council, Speaker Adams, we want to use our bully pulpits to bring together the stakeholders in the criminal justice system to work more effectively to get people out of jail. The length of stay, the 1,300 people that you referenced from Councilmember Hanee's questions, that have been in jail for over a year, in what is, by all accounts, a hellhole, is totally unacceptable. We can and should do better. We want to speed up case processing. We want to see population review teams take place. We want to work with all of the stakeholders, the judges, the defenders, the prosecutors, and of course, our city agencies, to push. And if there are resources that we can bring to the table, talk to us. We want to work together to drive down the population on Rikers Island expeditiously and safely as we possibly can. I did just want to note, you know, as MACJ, and the director of MACJ, Deanna Logan, worked on these issues directly in her previous capacity as deputy director, drove the population review team efforts. She has a ton of expertise here. She is an asset and an ally for the administration in helping us to make this happen. I-
I mean, I speak to Ms. Logan frequently, so we're very acquainted with each other and our former colleagues.
Good. And I appreciate that. You know, MACJ has, has found time and again, violence decreases when certain problematic detainees are removed from jails. It's critically important that DOC identify those individuals, work with us, and these population review teams as we work to get Intro 806 passed, although of course, this is work that you can do on your own without us intervening, to both drive down violence and drive down the population.
Well, it's not work that we can do on our own. So let me just correct you on that. I have within my power, as you know, Program 6A authority. And I would tell you, as Commissioner, I have released the most sentenced individuals on the Program 6A.
And you should be commended for that.
And we have-
What's the current number now, Commissioner?
We've released, I believe the number is 62. And we've had a 90% success rate of keeping those individuals in the community with case managers.
Yes.
But I don't have legal authority over the pre-trial detainee population.
No.
It's reserved for the courts.
The administration can work to convene population review teams, can bring these stakeholders together. When I say you, I mean the Adams administration as a whole, can make it a priority to work together to drive down the population. Unfortunately, we've seen the population go up and up and up. And I was troubled by your earlier comment where you said if Rikers Island is going to close. And you matched that by also noting that you're legally obligated, that the city is legally obligated to close Rikers Island by 2027. But Rikers Island must close, and it must close swiftly. And so we want to do everything we can in this council to continue this trend that we have seen in New York City for the past 30 years of reducing incarceration and increasing safety. That is what we need to continue to do. And I'm very concerned by the uptick in the population that we're experiencing over the course of this year. We're now at 6,000 people in our jails. That is an unacceptable number. We had been down under 4,000 just a few years ago. We can get to 3,300 if we invest in justice involved, in justice-involved supportive housing, if we invest in alternatives to incarceration, if we invest in population review teams, if we invest in therapeutic beds. These are investments that we can prioritize and make to safely reduce the population in New York City. I just, could I make one more comment on the Nunez? Thank you very much, Chair Rivera. I just, I, I realize that I focus just on the chair's just exceptional bill, but I do want to say, I made the difficult decision a few weeks ago to sign onto a letter with colleagues expressing support for receivership. And that's because seven years ago, when the Nunez decree, you know, began, since seven years ago when the Nunez decree began, the death rate has more than doubled, 19 deaths this year. Slashings and savvies have increased over six times. That's a 350% increase. The rate of use of force per incarcerated person has tripled since the start of the consent decree, and use of force resulting in serious injuries has increased almost 10 times. Despite the budget for DOC continuing to go up and up and up, these are not problems that you created. I don't blame you for them. These are deep structural problems that we are facing at the Department of Corrections. And I do not believe that the power exists within your office to fix them. And I don't believe that the Monitor has made the progress that we should have all expected in seven years of oversight and work. And that is why I believe that a receiver is necessary to cut through the red tape, get people back to work, and start bringing an ounce of humanity to the work of this, to the work of this agency. All of that is in the spirit of, we need to close Rikers Island. This is a bridge. This is not the long-term solution. But I, I do want to make, I did want to make that comment on the record for why I believe receivership is necessary.
Madam Chair, if I could just respond to that. I just want to first say that the Monitor's Steve Martin and the monitoring team and their subject matter experts have centuries of experience. But it is not the Monitor's responsibility to turn around this department. He has a role in auditing our progress and determining what we're making away when needed for consultation by myself or the senior leaderships of this department. He is someone who we can go to for some guidance, given the breadth of his experience and the centuries of experience of his team. But the responsibility of turning around Rikers Island has always been in the power of this city. And this city has not really been committed in turning around the Department of Corrections for over a decade. And we have that commitment now. The structural changes that this administration has made with the inter-agency task force, the mayor's commitment to ensure that I'm given not only political support, but structural support with the other leveraging of the other departments in the city to do things that fix our infrastructure issues, make sure that we can deal with our organizational health issues as it relates to our staff, ensuring that there's no daylight between myself and Health and Hospital Corporation, CHS, so that we can deliver patient care to those that are in our custody, putting together a criminal justice summit where we met with the respective district attorneys and other stakeholders in the criminal justice community, so that there's not about wins and losses, but how we evolve this system. That is an unprecedented level of commitment under this administration to turn around this department. And quite frankly, that did not exist for many, many decades.
Well, I just want to, I respect Councilmember Wrestler's position and that of my colleagues. You know, we've seen horrific conditions. There are many, many deaths. We are trying to get to a place where we feel like there is progress. And between the Correctional Health Services, the failure to produce people at appointments, it's one alarming situation and factor after another. So let me just get to, I have Councilmember Abreu to ask questions. Thank you for your response.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So your staff indicated in a Board of Correction meeting that they would dismantle decontamination showers, or at least remove the cages around the showerheads that have contributed to at least two deaths in the past two years. Have all decontamination showers in the jails have been removed yet?
So the, the decontamination shower that you're referencing in intake was removed? That we made the decision a few months ago, and it's not in use? We have other decontamination showers throughout the facility because we are required to decontaminate a person in custody when the deployment of OC spray is used to deal with an incident regarding, in many cases, detainee-on-detainee violence. So we do have decontamination showers in place as we are required to decontaminate individuals when they're sprayed with OC spray.
Got it. So what are the rules for using these showers? And have these rules been broken in this past year?
Well, when, if we, if, if decontamination showers are, for some reason, used inappropriately, and it is discovered, then we have an investigations division that would investigate those claims. If someone makes an allegation related to that, then we would investigate those as well. And if disciplinary action is warranted, then we would take it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
With regards to the Monitor's findings, which repeatedly discussed the problem of staff abandoning their posts, specifically including in the October 28, 22, 22 report, is, what is the current process, if any, to check whether or not staff are on their post? And how often is that, is that monitoring being done?
Certainly. So we have, did a pilot at RNDC recently where we have implemented scanning technology that we got from the NYPD with their assistance. And that's part of the sort of the effort of the inter-agency task force and this administration's ability to leverage all city government in order to help us with our situation. So with that pilot, what it does in real time is identify for us when an employee arrives at the facility and is at priority posts, like housing unit posts, that we know in real time not only that the post is covered, but who is on that post. And we are looking to expand that capability to our other facilities. In addition to that, we have area supervisors in the rank of correction captains. They're first-line supervisors, and they are frequently doing tours of housing unit areas to ensure that the A post officer, which is in the bubble, is on post, to ensure that the B post officer is on the floor and on post, as well as engaging and supporting the officers if anything comes up throughout the day that they need addressed beyond their authority as a correctional officer. In addition to our assistant deputy wardens, our deputy wardens, our wardens and our acting wardens also tour the facilities. Senior Deputy Commissioner Dempsey and his team, as well as myself, tour facilities. So there is constant engagement with staff and persons in custody to ensure that there is engagement with the population that's under our care.
And thank you for that. And have you found it helpful, having this new capability? Has it proven to be effective?
So far, what it, what is done is, as you know, our agency for a long time has been a very paper-based agency. And what we're doing now is leveraging technology, not only in real time to know that a post is staff, but whom is on that post. I think that's a significant value. In addition to, we've hired and created an Office of Management Analysis and Planning, who have industrial engineers. This department never had a research component to it to do real evidence-based evaluation, to determine how we can optimize workforce work. And we're undertaking those things now. So I think all of that together has enhanced our ability to make sure that we're meeting the core responsibilities of the department.
Thank you, Commissioners. I want to say I'm very encouraged with the new data on the workforce and the absenteeism decreasing. Definitely rooting for you to see that progress continue.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. You mentioned some of the screenings. In the last hearing, we mentioned that you were going to start looking at, or you're figuring out sighting for how you screen every individual coming onto the island or into your facilities in order to prevent contraband, just sort of across the board, not, not just blaming drugs coming in with family or on the actual incarcerated detainee people themselves, but to see how involved DOC officers are in that process. So are you on your way to implementing screenings, or I should say scannings, for every person coming onto the island? How far along is that?
So we are still in the progress of evaluating our infrastructure and what other needs we may have to be able to enhance access control on the island. As soon as I have a more sort of concrete plan and what challenges we may have to be able to put like something like that forward, I'd be happy to share that with you and the members on the committee. But we are not there yet. It's a, it's a big issue because a lot of it is infrastructure-driven. And because legally, the island is closing in 2027, that presents funding challenges from a capital infrastructure standpoint. But we're trying to do all that, we're doing all that evaluation now as we speak.
Regarding your mention of contracting Securus for tablets, how much is the city paying them?
The contract has not been registered yet, so I don't have that dollar amount in front of me of what we're paying them.
Do you know how much it's going to cost detainees to send emails with this program or access other elements on the tablets?
So a number of amenities and functionalities on that tablet are free. Let me share what some of those are with you. Education services are free. Digital Law Library is free. We have a library of eBooks which contain 10, thousands of titles, which are free. It allows the person in custody to receive direct messages from the department on updates or minimum standards, things like that, for free. It also provides for free AM and FM radio, and also provides for free phone calls, which is really the largest sort of increase in accessibility for individuals to make phone calls directly to their family members and loved ones. That is also free under the sort of rules of how we make calls, which is 21 minutes every three hours, which is also free. Now, there are some amenities that will have a cost to it. We are thinking from a programmatic standpoint, especially for those that are of our indigent population, how we can come up with incentive structures to be able to give those individuals access to that, what I would call premium amenities, at no cost to them. And we're working through those out. But I think the biggest upside is having each member of the population having a tablet and increasing access for their ability to contact their loved ones via that tablet.
Okay, understood. Premium amenities could be costly. You're figuring that out. All right. I just, just two more questions about, about Mr. Mejias, because I, I can't stop thinking about, I know it's under investigation. I understand privacy. I understand HIPAA. I understand these restrictions. Do you know how many medical appointments he missed while he was in custody?
Sorry, I wouldn't be able to share that because of patient privacy.
You have released similar data via the Board of Corrections.
As, yeah, we do submit information to the Board of Correction, but that's a particular arrangement. I just can't share general patient information in a public format.
Why doesn't the Department of Correction make reports about custody deaths public? It's just BOC at the moment.
Well, I don't have, I mean, BOC, I don't manage BOC. I mean, they're an independent oversight body, and if they choose to want to send out reports, that's their choice. These death and custody investigations are led by the New York State Attorney General's Office and in some instances, other law enforcement bodies. They're conducting these investigations. And if they so chose to release their investigative findings to the public, that would be up to them.
I'll be looking into that legislatively. Commissioner Molina, following up on one of my previous lines of questioning on staff tampering with the intake process, I know the matter was referred to DOI. But how many staff members were actually involved in altering this data? What were their ranks? What has happened to those staff? Were they ever suspended? Were they otherwise disciplined or corrected? If so, what did that look like? Are they currently still working?
So the DOI has not concluded its investigation to determine if any disciplinary action is warranted. The rollout of that prior administration dashboard- The rollout of that prior administration dashboard, I would say was probably not done very thoughtfully. Under the leadership of our new team, what we've done is we've clearly defined what expectations are. We are conducting training to make sure that staff is not making mistakes and that we're holding not only them accountable, but holding ourselves accountable to make sure that those going through the intake process are going through it as timely as possible so that they can be placed in their housing unit.
Because you know who they are. And I just am trying to bring some transparency to those who continue to, in terms of the disciplinary process, how we move that along and make sure they were doing the right thing. I want to thank you for answering the questions. I know there are people here to testify. Let me go back to Councilmember Brewer who has a follow-up question.
Just a quick question, still following up on healthcare. So, the issue is if I am feeling not well, then I need a correction officer to go with me to the clinic or whatever is appropriate. How many officers are assigned to that? And there is an allegation, I don't know if it's true, that sometimes correction officers don't want to go or they aren't available. And that too is curtailing the ability for people to get healthcare. I am just focused on this healthcare.
No, and you want to answer?
Yeah, I can answer that. I think--
You need to put the mic on, I think. Thank you.
I think it's fair to say that in the past, this was not our strength. I can tell you now that the current statistics are that we escort people there who need to go there more than 95% of the time. We're not perfect yet, but it is a much better story than it was a year ago, and will continue to get better. Lawyers are working with people in the facilities, and it is our goal to get everybody there. But 95% is a good start.
Okay. I agree with, I'm just letting you know that people who are in the facility are telling me that is not perceived to be such a high percentage and that part of the problem is not having somebody available. I'm just saying. So, you may say 94%, I have no way of refuting that. But I just wish that we would all just really hone in on this healthcare. If getting to the facility is the right, to the clinic is the right way to go, fine. I would argue, having participated in school health over the years, that some peer health programs in the general population with professionals would also be a way to go. But the healthcare is still, if people are getting ill and passing on because they haven't been in a certain health facility, there's something underlying wrong.
And to that point, I will say that we've also have, especially at Rosie's, allowed for patients to take themselves if there's not a security risk. And we've gone back to doing things like that. We have increased the number of escort offices that are available. We are working with CHS to make sure that we have the scheduling of patients to be in balance. Last fiscal year, we had over a half a million medical encounters scheduled for a population of under 6,000 patients. Those are a lot of medical appointments, right? And I think as our staff engages in partnership with CHS, with patients, it is to encourage them to address a lot of the root medical issues that are causing them to be just as involved, whether that's from a physical health standpoint, mental health, or co-occurring substance abuse addiction.
Okay. But I'm just saying, as much as you're trying, there's still an underlying situation that's not completely working. And this is this population that this should be able to, because everybody's in one space. It's not like you're trying to take on the world. And whether it's a lack of support from the COs, whether it's the health of hospitals is not open enough, people aren't more proactive, I don't know. But I just wish you would really focus on that. Thank you.
For CHS, do you diagnose addiction or mental health issues in your preliminary health screenings?
So, we do screen for substance use and mental health issues. A mental health referral would lead to a comprehensive evaluation.
Do you do that also when the person is about to return to their community?
So, it would depend on the patient. So, if it is a mental health patient, so a Brad H. class member, they are required to receive specialized discharge planning, which would include access to mental health services in the community.
I feel like the health screenings are something that should be constant and general. There are people that are leaving the facilities with addiction that previously did not enter with one. And I feel like there is a gap there in terms of data and provision of services. So, in terms of the medical appointments that are missed, we do have that data. You do release it. There are, some of them are documented as refusals. You said the same for people going to their court appointments. I just want to make sure that the department is committed to documenting all service refusals, just all refusals in general, and making that information public and where possible, with video evidence.
And we've begun to do that, especially with the courts, right? Because we want to be able to provide video evidence to the judges in support of them issuing securing orders for us to use force to bring these individuals to court if need be.
I appreciate that. And just the last question about the staff tampering with the intake process. Are you really not aware of what happened to those officers that were involved? Were they not suspended?
We have not taken any disciplinary action as of yet because the investigation is still ongoing. And I'd like for that to proceed so we can have a more robust response to addressing the issue. And we don't really know if that was intentional or if it would be a training issue. So, that's what that investigation is going to uncover.
Well, I look forward to the outcome of that investigation. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for answering our questions.
Thank you for your time.
And with that, we will move on to the public testimony. Thanks again. We're going to begin with Zoom testimony from Zachary Katz Nelson. Nice to see you again.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Chair Rivera. I'm Zachary Katz Nelson, Executive Director of the Littman Commission. Thanks for holding this hearing of the opportunity to testify. I want to focus on three steps the council can take to safely lower the population at Rikers because that is, as we've talked about, is essential to reducing the level of violence in the jails and to increasing safety on our streets. What happens in Rikers doesn't stay in Rikers, and we need to subject fewer people to the conditions inside. And those three things are Intro 806, the Population Review Team bill, expanding electronic monitoring, and expanding access to supportive housing. You know, last year, our commission in the Center for Court Innovation put forth a comprehensive blueprint how to safely reduce the population, the jail population, how to get to that goal of 3,300 people safely, efficiently, and keep the population down. And Population Review Teams are one of our key proposals in there. Thank you so much for taking that forward because they are essential to bring all the actors together who work in the criminal system and go case by case, individual by individuals. Does this person need to be in jail? How can we safely release them? And how can we resolve their case once and for all if that's not the case? We can't release them into the community. And so, find a way forward and bring the population safely down. It's been prudent and effective, as you said. Elsewhere in the country, we need to move forward in this. And we look forward to working with you and the city in trying to make sure that that can happen and happen quickly. Electronic monitoring, just want to say, there are only about 180 ankle bracelets available in New York City right now for people who could be diverted from Rikers and put safe in the community. Our surrounding counties use electronic monitoring much more often than we do, even for people facing serious violent felony offenses who can safely be in the community. Not everybody's accused of violence is a risk for committing new violence in the community. We have to be realistic about who's inside, what they're facing. But we can do this right. There are 400 people waiting to be screened for those 180 bracelets. We need to do more to make sure that people can actually access the proper--
Time is expired.
These are things that judges have looked at their cases and said, hey, this person doesn't need to be in Rikers. We can do it differently. Let's make sure people have the tools they need to make that happen. And finally, supportive housing. As you know, justice involves supportive housing. It's been proven for people that cycle in and out of Rikers to cut incarceration by up to 40% in New York City. The city promised three years ago to increase the supply of supportive housing for this population from 120 beds to 500 beds. None of those new beds have come online. Not enough money was put behind the effort. We need to change that. We need to change that right now so we can get people with serious mental illness out of the jail, stop them from cycling through, and get them into the care, supportive care that they really need. And so, hopefully, we can work together on all those things and push forward, including reducing this, changing this rule that says if you've been in Rikers for more than 90 days, you're no longer considered homeless and therefore you're not eligible for supportive housing at all. That is a rule the city can change by itself, and we shall work on doing that as soon as possible. Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony and for all your work and your partnership. Next on Zoom, Mary Lynn Woss from the Legal Aid Society.
Your time will begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Rivera, and the committee for holding this hearing. We, as you know, are the counsel for the plaintiff class in Nunez, and we are very grateful that you are seeking to hold the administration accountable for their lack of progress in this matter and in making our jails safer. Chair Rivera, there are just a few points on matters that just came up that we wanted to address. The first, the Commissioner testified about the affording recreation time. Since you asked that question, I was just looking at our records. In the last month alone, my office has sent the department at least 10 reports of people being denied their recreation time. Secondly, we just last week were communicating with the department about the same topic you asked about, about the response to the Board of Corrections reports of tampering with intake data. And we got a very different answer than you just got in writing. I would be happy to read it to you. But to move on to the bigger measures right here, here's where we are today. Use of force is dramatically worse today than it was when the city promised seven years ago to reform the systemic practice of brutality. What's occurring in this administration are rates of use of force that are catastrophic and unimaginable, frankly, seven years ago when we settled this matter. The results are what matter, not the names given to plans, programs, promises. Year after year, the administration comes before you promising a new plan, new hires, and the results show it is not working. This administration, despite a full year in charge of the jails, has still not been able to get the staff available to work on post. 20% of the staff of this municipal workforce remain unavailable to work. That problem is not solved. The process is not working. Seven years of failure, a year of failure in 2022, show us we cannot keep doing the same ineffective measures. The most glaring example perhaps of the insufficiency of the current practice is to look at the vacuum in supervisory leadership. The administration is here taking credit for expanding the hiring pool of wardens, something that has taken 18 months of pressure to get the administration to do. And what's even more revealing is what they still won't do, which is seek to hire deputy wardens or assistant deputy wardens from outside of the current administration. This, while the action plan requires them to increase the presence of supervisors, and they've gone backwards. And when the report shows us that deputy wardens are only just now being assigned to facilities where line staff have been working, I'm sorry, assigned to facilities on weekends and holidays, when line staff are working double and triple shifts. These are just some examples and illustrations of why, in the court, we have asked for appointment of a receiver to bring the city into compliance with the court orders that it has not complied with for seven years. We need a structural solution here. We need a solution that is not hostage to the political winds, that has the speed, authority, and flexibility that the city administration lacks. The stakes are just too high to watch and wait and hope. There are 19 families going into this holiday without a loved one who they had last year. This cannot continue. Business as usual is crediting the promises, the hopes, the plans of successive administrators, successive commissioners that have refused or failed to deliver. We appreciate the support of the council very much in holding the administration accountable to ending this humanitarian disaster. And we are happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking this on and for all of your work. I want to call up people that are here and bring a panel. Chaplain Dr. Victoria A. Phillips, will you come up? Christopher Boyle from New York County Defender Services. Tahani Dunn from Bronx Defenders. And Alice Fontier from NDS Harlem. Please correct me if I mispronounce your name.
Good afternoon. I'm Alice Fontier. I am the Managing Director of NDS Harlem. I want to read excerpts from a report highlighting some conditions. "City jails were not designed to house long-term detainees. The evidence suggests that in almost, if not every instance, they fall below the minimum constitutional standards. Overcrowding is the norm. There is no classification system in the jails, with the result that offenders of all types are placed together. The jails are unsanitary and in a state of disrepair, and inspections have disclosed that many are serious fire hazards. Medical care is practically nonexistent. The mingling of prisoners regardless of offense and propensity to violence, combined with the absence of security in the cell blocks and dormitories, is an invitation to violence of all kind. The mentally ill and cognitively disabled were unidentified and were dispersed throughout the population without treatment. The evidence upon this submission reflects that nothing has been done to correct the situation. There is now some effort at identification of those with mental problems, but the record of housing and treatment of such persons is one of total failure and non-compliance. Robbery, rape, and assault remain everyday occurrences among the general population. The dormitories particularly are still places of fear and violence. The defendants admit non-compliance with the requirement that guards be stationed in the living areas, including dormitories. The dormitories, they say, are too dangerous for the guards to enter. That fear is well-taken. The number of reported incidents of prosecutable crimes of violence shows a steady increase over the last four years. And it is axiomatic in the prison setting that the number of unreported crimes far outnumbers those which are reported. Lighting, ventilation, and heating remain inadequate. The living and food preparation areas are infested with vermin and rodents. Concerning medical care, the evidence reflects small gains, but glaring inadequacies have yet to be corrected. The most significant deficiency is in the quantity and quality of the medical staff. The medication distribution system is lax and record-keeping is poor. Evacuation plans and written sanitation procedures, if in existence, are not referred to and utilized. The medical facilities have not been regularly inspected. The report concludes, "The cumulative effect of these deficiencies and abuses is a threat to life and limb that violates the Eighth Amendment." What I am reading is not about Rikers Island. I have just read excerpts from Newman v. State of Alabama, a case from 1979, in which the court held that because of the conditions of the Alabama state jails, the Eighth Amendment had been violated, and appointment of a federal receiver was the only viable option. There is no discernible difference between the conditions on Rikers Island and the Alabama prisons of the 1970s. Rikers Island and the boat are deplorable, and the death rate has skyrocketed as a result. You know the facts and statistics about Rikers and the New York City jails. You will certainly hear more details and hear the trauma, pain, and suffering that is wrought on the people who are incarcerated there and their loved ones. You know that 19 people have died this year and that 16 died last year. You know that the conditions continue to deteriorate. You must-- You must now do something about it. It is a time to place respect for human lives above the egos of those who are charged with their care. This council must act. And while I support the two proposed bills, they are simply not enough. It is time to demand that the mayor and this city consent to the appointment of a federal receiver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Rivera and committee members. My name is Tahani Dunn. I am the director of the Prisoners' Rights Project at the Bronx Defenders, and I am also a criminal defense attorney at the Bronx Defenders under the criminal defense practice. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today and for the committee's continued efforts to address the crisis in our jails. Just days after the 19th person was killed by our jails, attention to this crisis could not be more urgent. Defenders, justice-impacted people, and other advocates have come before this council, the Board of Correction, and many other city stakeholders countless times, highlighting the urgency of keeping people out of our city jails and sharing the horrendous experiences of our clients in custody. Years have gone by since Rikers Island was deemed a humanitarian crisis, and we have seen very little change. Since the inception of the Nunez Consent Judgment seven years ago, the department's progress has been painfully incremental. Countless reports from the Nunez Monitor team continue to illustrate a deep-rooted culture of dysfunction and violence, as well as an unreasonable resistance to essential action needed to effectuate meaningful change. The city's action plan was ordered by the court on June 14, 2022. Six months later, the monitor asserts, in quote, "The conditions in the jail remain dangerously unsafe, and the monitoring teams remain gravely concerned about the alarming number of in-custody deaths, violence amongst people in custody, a lack of effective restrictive housing models, and various facets of the department's use of force practices and operational practices." The monitor went on to say, "Decades of mismanagement have created a deep-seated culture that is steeped in poor practices, illogical procedures, and little accountability for the humane treatment of people in custody." DOC and the city have been given lifeline after lifeline, each time at the expense of the lives of the people in their care and custody. Every public hearing is saturated with DOC testimony about policies and procedures, action plans, and pilot programs. Yet dysfunction and chaos in the jails persist. Abuse of power permeates through the department ranks. Accountability amongst uniform offers remains an anomaly. There are real-life tangible consequences for those in DOC's custody, such as unreasonable and frequent uses of lock-ins and lockdowns, denial of access to medical and mental health care, the constant disruption of basic services, perpetual and unchecked due process and constitutional violations, failure to produce to court and video conferences with legal counsel, prolonged separation from community and loved ones, increased exposure to violence and trauma, the perpetuation of abusive power paradigms within the uniformed ranks, and overall unprofessional, apathetic, and harmful approaches to the job, and of course, tragically, in-custody deaths. Legislators and courts have allowed the department and the city to conflate the existence of policies with progress. The progress must be measured by compliance, which unfortunately remains a far-fetched reality due to the litany of problems within the department and the ongoing abuse of emergency executive orders. We firmly believe that decarceration remains the most effective way to address abhorrent conditions at Rikers and to effect systemic change, and we will continue to work towards these long-term goals. In the meantime, however, DOC is simply unable to and unwilling to take meaningful steps towards addressing the humanitarian crisis it has created and perpetuated. Our clients suffer every single day, and that is unacceptable. So we urge the council to take every measure possible to both mitigate the harm that people in custody continue to experience, as well as do everything in their power to reduce the city jail population, including but not limited to amend and pass Council Rivera's Bill Introduction 806 to direct district attorneys' participation on population review teams in order to ensure actionable decarceration, vote on-pass Introduction 0549 to finally end solitary confinement, and of course, support an alternative management to the city jails as DOC has proven incapable of managing in meaningful change to ensure the safety of those in their custody. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name is Christopher Boyle. I'm the director of Data Research and Policy of New York County Defender Services. We handle thousands of cases a year in courts here in Manhattan. I visit Rikers Island regularly, and I could tell you it continues to be a chaotic, violent, and life-threatening experience for our clients and for staff that work there. The death this week of Edgar Almejias, the 19th this year, was another preventical tragedy, and we all must do better. So what can we do at this moment where the federal court refuses to act? I take a little bit of a different point of view than my colleagues here. My feeling is that what the city council should be doing is pressing the city to discontinue the emergency orders that are in effect right now. What you need to understand here is I sat here, just like everybody else did, and listened to, apparently, this jail has been turned around in about a matter of a few months, and everything seems like it's going in completely the right direction, and everything is fine. So then I don't really quite understand why we would still be under emergency orders. The Adams administration has issued and continues to several emergency orders over the last year. These have been renewed over and over again. My written testimony that I've given you includes the exhaustive list of what they've done here. The key word here is emergency. The approvals of these executive orders are predicated on the assistance that we are under a state of emergency. And as I've stated, if conditions have improved on the Commissioner Molina as the Department of Corrections contends, then why do we need to suspend the reviewable rules and standards that the board passed to keep people safe? The city cannot have it both ways. The harm of these continued executive orders are considerable and contributes to the terrible conditions and sense of despair that our clients feel. Executive Orders 241 and 297, for example, allow for punitive housing in the young adult jail of RNDC and enhance segregation housings in general population. Moreover, we are now nearly a year into the suspension of RMAS. I was present at the meeting in December of last year with Mock J. when we were having discussions about having council represent our clients at these disciplinary hearings for infractions. And make no mistake, these infractions are used against our clients in court by district attorneys during release applications that we make, as well as plea negotiations. We did a writ sometime within the last few weeks for a client, and the Department of Corrections came in and had numerous examples of all these disciplinary actions that we had no copies of. They claimed that there was numerous infractions that our client contributed to his own injuries, and yet we had no documentation as to any of this, and we didn't represent the client at any of these particular hearings. And we were obviously specifically told RMAS is in suspension because of the emergency that is on Rikers Island. If there's no more emergency, then we're prepared to do these hearings, and we should be allowed to do those hearings. Finally, if we are really committed to improving conditions on Rikers Island, we must include morale. This means resuming all recreation and programming opportunities that are available to the people in the Department of Corrections custody before COVID. City courthouses and schools are open. Mayor Adams wants everybody back into midtown offices in the city, and it's returning to normal. Then it's time to return to pre-COVID Rikers conditions. Suspending the executive orders and treating people who are incarcerated with dignity and respect of their due process rights are exactly what is needed to minimize the violence in Desperity Island. Thank you very much.
Peace and bless, oh, it's on. Peace and blessings, everyone. Peace and blessings, Chair. Thank you for this hearing. As always, thank you for your concern around all the issues with your constituents. I'm Chaplain Dr. Victoria A. Phillips. Everyone calls me Dr. V., and everyone knows me in all the coalitions I'm a part of. So this is passion work. This is hard work for me. I want to just keynote from today and what we heard from the commissioner. I want to respond on. So the commissioner said that the responsibility has always been with this city. He also said the system needs to be led by committed leaders. And he also said the department has come from being mismanaged from 2015 through 2021. I think that's clever of him to extend his criticism now that his actual numbers of loss of life and not being able to preserve people under his care has hit 19 in 2022. But I also want this system to realize the years that he gave, 2015, he was the federal monitor. And so I don't want people to forget that part. He did not just take over a system that he was unaware of, that he had no idea of the troubles and the deep-rooted culture and abuse and barbaric things that the officers tend to do. He took over a system that he was well aware of the sins of this city and his staff, more than any other commissioner ever has been. He had that head up, that lead in this race. So when you hold them accountable, think from that mindset. It also was CHS can't get off of this either, because today they was talking about a renewed commitment. But hold them accountable as well, because they come before this city council all the time, talking about what DOC and they are now working on, but I need to see implementation. And so you've, let me get some more time. You've had far too long to actually develop a triage team. You had a council member here that was asking, "Why don't staff go?" And you know, at the Board of Corrections in September, one of the board members actually asked the DOC staff, "Why did it take over 20 minutes to respond to an incident where they saw blood everywhere on the, you know, on the video?" And so that in itself highlights a lack. When we talk about medical, Molina mentioned over half a million medical appointments came to CHS last year. That sounds like amazing, right, for such a small population? But I immediately started thinking about, well, how many people had to repeat medical appointment requests because they were not taken? That is quite often. I remember when Stanley Richards was the vice chair for the Board of Corrections, he actually questioned CHS on the record at BOC hearing about that. And they were saying that on any given day, about 16% of sick calls was being seen. So it's fascinating to me how a number of almost 95% or something like that could be thrown out of engagement with people when that is not the case. And so I want to highlight something else with the medical. CHS and Commissioner Molina talks about these weekly meetings with the higher-ups and the leaders and how they work together to move things forward. Yes, those meetings are occurring, but there's no real action following those meetings, because there are so many loopholes that still have not been closed. So where's the data on them improving units and people being seen with these weekly meetings that have been occurring? And let me just get 30 more seconds.
All right, you got 30 more seconds.
Okay. The class that graduated yesterday, could you please follow up with commissioner and find out if they were in fact trained with CIT? Because Molina, he's very good with his words, and he mentioned the academy moving forward would be addressing that. So are those 108 officers not trained to go into the units right now as well? That's under his watch, and he has posted pictures of actually being at the academy, running and stuff with them. And he also mentioned a very rich suite of programming, yet individuals still don't have access to programming. How many B officers are being assigned in the facilities that do have programming running? They're very good with how they respond to things. And the Peace Center, that was not him. It was not closed. He acts like he opened it up. It was because his officers were not coming to work that it couldn't be utilized the way it's supposed to be. And lastly, I'll say, he mentioned being pretty confident when responding to your question around rec. And at the last BOC meeting, actual calls came in from detained individuals stating no rec and no commissary. But Molina couldn't mention that to you because he had already left. So he was unaware of those calls stating at those facilities, no rec, no commissary.
Well, I would say, Dr. V., I did remind him he was under oath when he said that it was a sure thing. So I will follow up on all of the things that you mentioned in addition to you.
And my last sentence, in 2018.
Because I got other people waiting.
Yes, in 2018, we actually passed a law to make all phone calls free. It started May 1, 2019. Do not allow DOC to now bring secures back with a premium plan to charge any detained individual in New York City anything, because we made it a law to remove secures in that way for a reason. Peace and blessings.
Absolutely. That I know. It's because of people in this room and many, many others that we were able to do that and make phone calls free, finally, for people that are incarcerated and detained. So besides them maybe taking credit, we will also ensure that no premium packages are going to further marginalize or disenfranchise anyone in the system. So thank you very much to this panel. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, I want to go to a panel on Zoom. Daniel Addis. Daniel, I'm sorry, I think I say your name a different way every meeting. So please correct me. Sarita, Lucas Marquez, and Jennifer Parish. You're our Zoom panel.
Thank you very much, Chair Rivera, and you pretty much got it right. Thank you very much. I'm Daniel Addis. I'm the director of New York Legal Policy at the Center for Court Innovation, and I'm here to testify regarding Introduction 806 regarding population review teams. And I want to begin by commending you, Chair Rivera, for your leadership in introducing this bill and trying to come up with a solution that the city desperately needs, and that's a path to 3,300. I share your belief the population review is an essential tool, and I'm speaking both as a representative of the Center for Court Innovation and from my extensive firsthand experience. I was a public defender in Brooklyn for almost nine years. As you know, I was counsel of the Committee on Public Safety. At the time, council passed legislation to ensure that Rikers would close. I served at the Department of Correction during the last administration and saw with my own eyes the incredible challenges the city faces managing its jails. And since joining CCI, I've been actively working to adapt the concept of population review teams to a city as large and complex as New York. The center wholeheartedly agrees with the underlying premise of the bill, that we should be asking a simple question about every person who is waiting for their trial on Rikers Island. Does this individual really need to be here? That means something different for different people. Is there somewhere else this person can live safely with appropriate supports in place while waiting for their trial? Is there a community-based treatment program that can safely treat and monitor this person and ensure they return to court? And if not, what can we do now to resolve their criminal case fairly before the person has spent years in Rikers waiting for trial? The constitutional presumption of innocence requires us to think twice about each of the thousands of people who are spending months and years in jail without being convicted of the alleged crime, and to take steps in individual cases to find something better than indefinite pre-trial detention. The center has successfully implemented population review teams in smaller jurisdictions across the country, like Toledo and St. Louis, as Councilmember Wrestler mentioned earlier. But we have some concerns with this bill's attempt to replicate the exact same model here in New York. These include the inability to guarantee participation of critical decision-makers, like the presiding judge and the district attorney, and the logistical challenges in convening all the people who are familiar with the facts of the cases that would be reviewed. So we've been developing a new model. But Chair Rivera, you and I and your staff have been working together on this and will continue to work together on this. So I'll just say that we would fully support a bill that requires the city to do a few things. Fund a jail population review system that's focused on the right review criteria rather than the participants, that utilizes and expands the city's rich network of programming and community resources and leverages existing data and research capacity. And so while I think that, and the center thinks that some structural changes are necessary to the bill, we really thank you for your leadership on this issue. We look forward to working with you and your office to make jail population review in New York City a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll certainly take that feedback and try to make the bill as strong as possible. Let's go to Sarita.
Your time will begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Rivera and council members, for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Sarita Daftry. I'm the co-director of Freedom Agenda. Our members are survivors of Rikers and people who've endured the torture of Rikers along with their loved ones, and also people whose family members were killed by the combination of disorder and cruelty that governs Rikers. And everything we've heard today confirms the things that they and most of the council already know, that closing Rikers is the ultimate and necessary solution to end the human rights crisis on Rikers, and the immediate solution is to decarcerate. So in the spirit of that, we strongly support Intro 806 to establish jail population review teams. And specifically, the federal monitor said in their most recent report, they urge that various stakeholders work together to address the long delays in case processing times described in this report in order to reduce the length of stay among people incarcerated in DOC jails and/or to maximize the use of jail diversion options. And they noted that actually that was, that the level of urgency that was needed was shown during COVID and needs to be shown now, given the conditions in the jails. That is from the federal monitor. So I will email the testimony that I planned, but I also need to note that today the commissioner said that if nothing else changes, they expect the jail population to increase to 7,000 people by 2024. That would make an already horrific death camp even worse. And when he said, "When nothing else changes," it has to be the job of this council to make sure that something changes. Because why would we accept a system that continues to kill people, that continues to cage people who need mental health treatment, and that continues to operate at a pace of case delay or trial, you know, a pace of cases that is three times longer than the national average? Why would we just say, "We're going to throw our hands up" and say that nothing changes and send more people here to die? That was unacceptable. That was unacceptable, and I believe that the Chair and the councils will see that as unacceptable as well. And this bill is one step to taking action to make sure that something does change as well as the action that the council will take in the next budget cycle to ensure the quarter of housing is fully funded. I'll just note, since I went a little bit off script, one other thing. We do support intro 589, although we hope that with population review teams, the number of people, pregnant people in the jails would be very small. And given the reality of what is happening in the jails, we want to just bring the focus back to what the Nunes consent case was about. So the department will have you think that this is a case about a generally violent place and then obscure the issue to make it seem like that violence is instigated by people in custody, when in fact, this litigation, the reason the federal government sued New York City was not because Rikers was generally violent. It was because their officers were abusing people violently, using force at excessive rates, striking people in the head, punching people who are in restraints, and they weren't being held accountable. So this is a case about the way that guards perpetrate violence, and the solutions need to be based on that. So the council needs to pass intro 549. The council should introduce legislation to protect the rights of people in custody to receive mail directly in recognition that drugs are not coming from people in custody or their visitors, they are coming through officers. And should move forward on efforts to strengthen the Board of Corrections as well. And I will end there. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. We will hear from Lucas and then Jennifer Parish.
It's time we begin.
The opportunity to testify today. While the department receives more time to purportedly work towards fixing the conditions at Rikers Island, the people in custody are suffering every day. They're suffering significant constitutional violations and being stripped of their humanity. The people we represent who are in DOC custody tell us on a regular basis, month after month, day after day, about lack of access to showers, other hygiene, other hygiene needs. They are not being fed consistently. They are not properly clothed. People with asthma are being pepper sprayed and not given proper medical attention. People who have chronic diseases such as diabetes and heart conditions are not getting adequate access to medical care. Just recently, we have heard that there have been 24-hour lockdowns occurring every other day in certain units in GRVC. Not only has this culminated in a unprecedented 19 people who have died in DOC custody, but as a BOC has documented in its reports, these deaths are due to ongoing and constant DOC mismanagement and irresponsibility. Nonetheless, DOC's solutions seem to revolve around separating the people in custody further from their humanity. They focus on putting people in extended lockdowns, putting people in enhanced restraints and other restrictive statuses without due process. Moreover, we can't understand the true scale of the constitutional violations taking place if the data that DOC provides us is inaccurate, and we know this to be the case. BOC and their recent reports on the deaths in custody confirmed that falsified logbook entries are common, showing rounds that never happened and at least one timely emergency medical call that was not made. As you spoke about today, DOC staff tamper with internal records and intake. And according to CHS Access to Health Services, DOC consistently undercounts overall non-projections to clinic appointments by several thousand missed appointments. BOC also noted this, these material discrepancies between CHS data and DOC data when it comes to medical access. And we also know, talking to our clients, that DOC's classifieds non-productions caused by DOC's failures to bring people to medical care. We've had clients tell us about being coerced into refusals or things that were no escorts being classified as refusals. We urge this council to prioritize investigating these issues and continuing their important regular visits to Rikers Island. It is clear that help from the federal courts are not in the way, and it is up to this council to do everything possible to mitigate the suffering and death that is continuing unabated. We urge this council to pass intro 806 immediately because conditions will not improve at Rikers until the population is decreased. Thank you.
Jennifer Parish, thank you so much. Thank you.
I can't seem to hear.
We can hear you.
If I am unmuted.
You're good. We can hear you.
Okay, thanks, Sarita. Sorry about that. I can't seem to hear what's going on in the council at the moment, but I'm sorry about that. My name's Jennifer Parish. I'm the Director of Criminal Justice Advocacy at the Urban Justice Center Mental Health Project and a member of the Jails Action Coalition and the Halt Solitary Campaign. First, thank you, Chair Rivera, for noting earlier that the DOC's action plan does not include any specific intervention related to people with mental health treatment needs, who are now about 50% of the jail population. We certainly think that it should. In the past, specialized mental health units have resulted in reduced use of force, and it's very unfortunate that the department has not committed to expanding the number of PACE units currently. Also, thank you for asking about the use of crisis intervention teams. Having crisis intervention teams in mental observation and PACE units was one effective strategy that was used in the past. Unfortunately, it's not being used now. I do appreciate that the Commissioner mentioned bringing back CIT training, but I am concerned that he said it would be in the academy. One of the things that was effective about CIT training previously is that it was a joint training between DOC and correctional health staff who are working in those units. So it created some kind of cohesion between the staff. And also, the staff who provided the training were people who are actually working in the facilities, which seemed to be another piece of the training's effectiveness. Also, I want to just stress that crisis intervention teams, it's not just about the training, it's actually about implementing it in the jails and making sure that the de-escalation happens in the units. And part of that is making sure that the units are staffed by ongoing steady staff who have those posts and are trained. I also want to stress the need that we need to decarcerate. That's the only way we're really going to address the crisis in the jails now. So thank you so much for sponsoring intro 806 as one way to do that. We hope that the population review teams will look at alternatives for people with mental health concerns who could certainly be better treated in the community. And finally, for people who remain in jail, conditions must be improved. And one critical way to do that is to pass intro 549, which would end solitary confinement in the jails. We hope you will do that right away. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your support and for your testimony to all, everyone on this panel. Thank you for your partnership. I do want to call up the next panel in person. Marge Ives, Herbert Swett, and Michael McQuillan.
I'm Marge Ives. I am not speaking formally from any organization, but I am a member of the League of Women Voters and CATAL. And I'm also on the board of the Women's Criminal Justice Association. I have been involved in advocacy for very many years, and I've been in this room often and have testified before the council. I, today, listened to Commissioner Melina and the other two people, and then they all got up and left, as well as a lot of people that were with them in the audience. And when they were leaving, I said to a couple of the gentlemen, I said, you should stay for this next testimony because that's the important part. They're not hearing what's actually, what people are experiencing. They're either not willing to listen or they're blind to what's really going on at Rikers. But from the testimony that we have heard both on Zoom and here, it's a terrible situation, and they must be in the room to hear it and maybe answer questions afterwards. So I would really urge you to redo your format. And is there a way of keeping them in the room, of requiring them to hear what the audience is saying?
Sorry, you're asking me a question. Typically, someone does stay until the end. The fact that there's not a single person here is clearly unacceptable. We will take it up with the administration. And all of us here have witnessed it and have documented it. So it's really up to the administration whether they choose to stay and listen. So clearly, we are all disappointed, and I'm glad that you brought it up, and we will bring it up to them as well.
And when I have been here in the past, they never stay. They never hear the real meat of the testimony. And so if there's any way that you can require them to stay, I would urge you to do so. And thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you.
I thank my friend and colleague for her wise words and second them as well. If there were a way also for other members of the committee and the council at large at other times to hear from us, the citizens in this democracy, I think that's well worth considering. Madam Chair, Mike McQuillan is my name. I'm proud to be Councilmember Hanif's constituent and to serve in Councilmember Wrestler's District on the Brooklyn Heights Synagogue Social Action Committee. I appreciate that they have both spoken out at past closed Rikers rallies. I chaired the NYPD Training Advisory Council's Race Subcommittee in the aftermath of the Eric Garner killing. And that experience with racial injustice, policy research, and a rigid political bureaucracy informs what I have come here today to say, to support the CATAL Center's Closed Rikers campaign. We have long known factually and statistically that conditions in the Rikers Island jail complex constitute a human rights emergency. The council three years ago voted 36 to 13 to close it over time. That was a mandate for action. Former Chief Judge Lippman's Independent Commission on Criminal Justice and Incarceration five years ago endorsed closing Rikers. That too was a mandate. Yet 6,000 detainees, twice the intended capacity in terminally, await their day in court, their constitutional right to prompt trials of farce. Many there sleep in close proximity, on tiled floors, in shower stalls, all risk intentional or inadvertent violence, the abuse of solitary confinement, and ignored injury or illness. One detainee, fortunate to survive the carnage though scarred, spoke to me on Park Slope, 7th Avenue. "I just came out of Rikers," Jimmy's plaintive voice informed me. He added that "they beat me," as I by reflex offered money for a meal that I innately knew was not what he deserved. "If I had $1,000 and you said you had been on Rikers Island, I would give you half," he claimed. His teary, pleading eyes burned holes in my heart. "I want my eyes, as if laser beams, to pass that searing sense to this body, to hold the mayor accountable, to accelerate the implementation of the three-year-old closing plan, to divest from the punishment culture and invest in meeting human needs for affordable housing, meaningful jobs, and adequate nourishing food." Khalif Browder suffered in solitary confinement for two of his three years in detention. Trauma caused him in 2015, at 22-years-old, to take his own life. Nineteen others have now died just this year. God forbid there be 20. Khalif Browder accused of stealing a backpack, steadfast in asserting his innocence, sacrificed himself for that moral principle. How many others plead falsely to guilt, ruining futures for themselves and their families to release themselves from hell? Will this committee and this council act by every conceivable means as angels of mercy to save them? It is time to hold this mayor accountable. He must commit to closing Rikers, divest from its inherent brutality, invest in meeting human needs. That is my conscience call. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And we will explore legislatively how we can make the administration stay.
Thank you.
I'm going to call, so Herbert Swett, I actually called, but I guess he's no longer here. Okay. I am going to call the next Zoom panel. Danielle Gerard, Kelly Grace Price, Joyce Silver, Michelle Feldman.
Time will begin.
Hi, thank you, Chairman Rivera. I hope everybody can hear me. My name's Danielle Gerard. I'm a senior staff attorney at Children's Rights and National Advocate for Youth in State Systems and a member of the New York City Jails Action Coalition. We advocate for young adults incarcerated on Rikers Island and call for immediate decarceration of the city's jails. Incarcerated persons continue to die on Rikers. Officers are still not showing up for work, and people have been going without showers or food and are left in their cells for hours on end. Young adults are particularly susceptible to these stressors of confinement. Among the 19 people who have died in custody this year, one was 24 and one was 25. Being incarcerated on Rikers has become a death sentence. We heard at the beginning of today's hearing that staff absenteeism is double pre-pandemic rates. Railroad workers get no paid sick leave at all, yet COBA members get to abuse theirs with impunity. The use of force rate and rates of fights remain unacceptably high for young adults. Under the consent decree, staff is mandated to intervene to prevent fights and assaults and to de-escalate confrontations, yet the Nunes monitor cannot even assess whether the department consistently assigns officers and captains to the same housing units day to day until, quote, "the department has a coherent structure for assigning, tracking, and scheduling staff equally critical. Access to programming, education, recreation, and medical and mental health treatment is woefully inadequate for young adults." This is no way to treat our fellow New Yorkers, especially at a yearly cost per person of more than $500,000. It was alarming to hear that the Commissioner does not believe that Rikers can close, as is legally required, due to the ever-increasing population. That's why the council should pass intro 806 to establish jail population review teams. Rikers must be closed. Community resources, including supportive affordable housing, ramped up and fully funded, and decarceration begun in earnest. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
We'll hear from Kelly Grace Price, and then Joyce Silver, and then Michelle Feldman.
Hi, it's Kelly Grace Price from Closed Rosies. I'll turn in my written comments. I'm crestfallen that this committee has failed in its duties to hold the Commissioner and the Department of Corrections accountable for its lack of information coming out about the task force, which is topically what this hearing was about. The department has hidden behind the assertion that the activity of the task force is privileged since it announced this at its last hearing on June 28th of this year. There has been zero pushback about this from anyone on the council in any hearing or in any press article or on any written notice or on any letter sent to the Southern District from any member of the city council. There's no excuse for this. I'm crestfallen that you have failed us in your obligations. Furthermore, the Board of Corrections' lack of presence at these meetings continues to be noted. There is no better voice to let us know what is really going on behind the scenes than that of Director of the Board of Correction, Amanda Masters. The busy work and the questions that were asked of the Commissioner today were nothing more than that, busy work. We only gleaned tiny nuggets of information in between that let us know what the work of the task force really is. Neighborhood defender services, Mr. Doyle said it best, "The use of executive orders must end." The shroud of the work of the Department of Corrections hiding behind the secrecy of these orders has to end. Information coming out of the island has been.
It's time to expire.
Thank you. You'll get my written testimony.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Joyce Silver.
Excuse me, can you tell me how much, I'm new to this, and thank you, our Chairman Rivera. How much time do I have? I've never done this before.
Well, thank you for asking, like you do two minutes. Typically, you get two minutes for your testimony, but should you go, you will hear a bell, and you will for your testimony, but should you go, you will hear a bell, and you will hear one of the sergeants say, "Time is expired." But should you be in the middle of a thought and the middle of a sentence, please be sure to finish that.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you for joining us.
My pleasure. Actually, it's, it's been very interesting. I represent Cattell as well. I've been working with the organization, and I represent myself as a layperson. I'm an advocate, the voice of Joyce.me. And some of the things that I think are really appalling is that we don't know the exact ratio of the incarcerated population to the, the people who are the people, I guess, the Bureau of Corrections, the people, the staff that are responsible for them. We have no idea how many people are in one cell and what they are getting. But I do have recommendations. One is a simple program that first-year attorneys utilize to separate out their population of clients. And there is no reason that when an incoming person comes to Rikers Island, there can be a quick checklist of, is this a mental condition? Is this minor shoplifting? Is this a minor crime? Is this person here only because they lack bail? And then you could have various adjudication methodologies to immediately disperse this population to appropriate, whether it's community affairs or, or counseling, or whatever they need, halfway housing. I, I think you're looking at over 40% of the, of the Rikers population being incarcerated for long term because there is no bail reform. There is no halfway position for doing community service. If somebody steals a backpack, your life is a terrible price to pay for a minor crime. And one, one other thing is, people who are on Rikers and haven't even been to trial, do they indeed have voting rights, or has that been given up as well as their lives? Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if you'd like to submit a, a written, written testimony that's longer, more formal, you can do that as well.
How do I do that, ma'am? I've never done this.
We're gonna, there's gonna be, there's usually an email address that goes out to individuals we're alerting to testify. We're gonna make sure you get that email. So in the future, you can submit written testimony. That might be a little bit longer than two minutes, and then you can come in and give sort of abbreviated remarks verbally, should you be available. Okay?
All right. I appreciate it, and thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you for your patience. We're gonna, we're gonna go to Michelle Feldman.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairwoman Rivera and members of the committee. I'm Michelle Feldman, and I'm with Women's Community Justice Association. We're a nonprofit that's dedicated to ending mass incarceration for women and gender expansive people in New York. And we lead the Beyond Rosies campaign, whose main priority is to decarcerate mothers, daughters, and sisters at the Rose M. Singer Center on Rikers Island. Unfortunately, the decarceration, it's moving in the wrong direction. In the height of the pandemic, there were 149 women and gender expansive people at Rosies, and today, that's jumped to 366. That's why these bills are so important. They're part of reversing the trend, and we strongly support both Intro 589 and Intro 806. Intro 806, the population review team, it's, it was one of the recommendations in our report with the Lippman Commission called Path to Under 100, to decrease the population of those at the Rose M. Singer Center. There's only one element missing, which is having justice-impacted individuals be part of the review team process. It's really important that those who have lived experience have a seat at the table and weigh in on possible diversion and alternatives for individuals at Rikers, and we encourage that to be included in the bill. We also appreciate that Intro 589 would ensure that pregnant women receive proper medical care when in jail. But the reality is that pregnant women should not be in jail in the first place. The stress and the trauma of incarceration is not conducive to a safe and healthy pregnancy, and there are safe alternatives, like our sister organization, Shiro, which has served women before and after birth who have been diverted from Rikers, and they've done so safely, and that both mother and child have thrived. And in 2019, Illinois lost a set of state policy that went against jailing women who are pregnant. New York should consider a similar measure. Thank you again for, for taking this action to protect and decarcerate mothers and daughters and sisters. And we also want to thank the council, the Chairwoman Rivera and Councilmember Caban for introducing 831, which we hope will have a hearing that goes even further to help women and gender expansive people with a women's resource navigator to get more people off of Rikers in a more efficient way. And we hope that the committee votes in support of these bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here we may have inadvertently missed who wishes to testify? Please be sure to fill out a slip with the Sergeant at Arms, or anyone we might have missed on Zoom that also wishes to testify. Please let us know. Okay, with that, I'll close the public session. I want to thank everyone for joining us, all of you for your testimony, for your advocacy, for your passion. Today, the committee conducted an oversight hearing on the Department of Corrections' compliance with the Nunes consent judgment, and more specifically, the court-ordered action plan meant to remedy unconstitutional conditions of confinement. And as Chair of the Committee on Criminal Justice, I remain deeply concerned that the Department of Corrections will not be issuing a public report until April 2023, and further that their comments of the jail's population could potentially increase, which is wholly unacceptable and really goes in contradiction with all the work that this council and the advocates before my tenure and many, many years past have done to get us to this point. Since 2015, the federal monitor has issued reports and ordered changes to try and fix what was and still is a fundamentally broken jail system in New York City. There are reports and comments that have claimed progress, but the progress is so remedial. It should shock all New Yorkers that such basic safeguards to health and safety were not already in place. The reports of conditions in Rikers that were described in today's hearing are clear evidence that closing Rikers as planned is the only path forward. We cannot accept that the city's jail population will inevitably increase if nothing changes. While we continue to focus on closing Rikers permanently, there are many legislative actions the council can take to improve safety and prevent unnecessary tragedy in the meantime. Intro 589 would require the Department of Corrections to update the public on medical care and outcomes for people who are pregnant while incarcerated, and we have to hold this administration accountable in terms of missed medical appointments, the lack of mental health support for the increasing population that needs it. Intro 806 would create a population review team composed of experts to evaluate every single person's case at Rikers, to ensure that whenever safe, people in custody can be released while awaiting trial, rather than be put at risk to themselves within the walls at Rikers. Every day of inaction to address this humanitarian crisis is a stain on this city's history. The challenges ahead of us are enormous, but there are also concrete actions that can be taken. And my condolences to the 19 families and everyone in the years past that experienced the loss. I hope that my colleagues and I can pass these bills, in addition to others that are in the council, that are common sense, that will bring us to a more progressive place, holding the administration's feet to the fire until the last jail on Rikers Island closes, and that our collective humanity is finally centered as this city's priority. So thank you all. Thank you to committee counsel, to my team, to all the sergeants for assisting and putting on this hearing. And with that, we adjourn.